I'd like to call to order the school board meeting for November seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen.
The board members will present, please respond, Mr. Stern, Ms. Gray, Mr. Bourne,
President.
Mrs. Taylor.
President.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed.
President.
Ms. Jones, Mrs. Pateknez.
President.
Mrs. Lawson. Here is Chris Colvin, the head of the board, and Vice Chair. And the next item is to go into prose.
I'll swing to the first item, page two point two thirty seven, one point eight one, study, Pennsylvania. I believe that the school board city Richmond convened in closed session to discuss the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, enrollment, salaries, discipline, resignation. On specific behalf of officers, employees, and school board, we're going to discuss and continue to interview prospective candidates for employment. The consultation with legal, possible employer retained by the school board regarding specific legal requirements required, and legal advice last chance.
Other things? Uh, opposed, any abstentions? We are now in the room. The school board meeting for November seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen.
Madam Clerk. Does anybody here require interpretive services? Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, before we go to the next item, I have two amendments to the agenda. One is to delete the facilities report, and the other is to add the financial statement for the month ending October.
Sir, move.
I'm sorry, Ms. Taylor.
A third amendment to move the Benford to an informational and not an action.
And Ms. Taylor would like to move four point zero three, discuss for action recommendation for academic program change at Benford Middle School to increase enrollment. She would like to take that out of the superintendent's report and move it to other informational items.
What's the procedure? Mr. Stern, I believe, made a motion before that. I mean, where are we? I'm trying to figure out where we are. What's the motion to amend the agenda?
Okay. Madam Clerk, can you please repeat the other amendments?
Okay. Ms. Taylor was trying to get my attention, Mr. Bourne, so I missed that. But the amendments would be to delete the facilities report, add the financial statement for the month ending October, and to move item four point oh three out of the superintendent's report and move it into other informational items.
So you lumped both motions into one?
I'm sorry?
You lumped both into one motion?
Ms. Taylor was trying to get my attention to add her amendment before Mr. Stern made his motion.
But we had a motion on the floor, so can we?
It wasn't seconded.
I think it was, but
I didn't hear.
Is there any reason why this is? What difference this move would make?
I'm sorry, it won't be actionable tonight, and we will have an opportunity to get the input from the members of the Benford community as well as the constituency in that area.
It's not an actionable item. It's actually just a report. It won't be any action till December first.
Okay, the wording in the agenda is there for action.
Well, I will tell you that the way that the presentation is going to be made, it's for action at your December first meeting, so it won't be, we won't be asking for, just so you know that.
Okay, as long as it's not actionable tonight, then that works for me.
So then the wording would be discuss and take out for action and leave it on the agenda?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, move.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion to amend the agenda was made by Mr. Stern. It was seconded by Ms. Gray. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The next item on the agenda is item two, your public information period. What is your pleasure, Madam Vice Chair? We don't have anyone who signed up in advance.
Members of the audience, if you wish to give public comment, because we have a lot of folks here tonight and we're trying to stay on schedule, please line up, and we're going to see how many folks want to give public comments, and then we'll determine how much time we're going to allocate. Okay, we're going to do five minutes if you're representing a group and three minutes for individuals. And we're closing the lines at the security guard right there. So you have about thirty more seconds to get in line if you want to give a public comment tonight.
And as they're lining up, would you please sign the sign up sheet and state your name for the record when you come up to speak? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Charlotte Hare, and I'm president of the Richmond Education Association. Today starts the beginning of American Education Week. This week begins the celebration, along with the National Education Association, in raising awareness about the need to provide every child with an equitable, quality, public education. The celebration highlights the importance of bringing together educators, parents, students, and communities in a unified effort to build great public schools. It also reflects NEA's vision on of calling upon America to provide public school students with quality schools so that they can grow and achieve in the twenty-first century. To further reinforce the American Education Week's theme, each day of the week will spotlight the different people who are critical in building great public schools for the nation's fifty million K-12 students. Today was the kickoff day. Tomorrow is Parents' Day. Please invite your parents into your schools and your classrooms so that they can get hands-on experience of what it takes and what it's like to be their child for a day. Wednesday, November the nineteenth, Education Support Professional Day. These are the persons who are most likely never given a thank you for all of the things that they do, from cleaning our buildings to feeding our children and being attendants on the buses. Thursday, November the twentieth, is educator of the day or for the day. Invite your community leaders in to be an educator for the day so that they clearly understand what it's like to be a classroom teacher. Friday, November the twenty-first, is Substitute Educators' Day. This day honors educators who are called upon to replace the regularly employed teacher in our classrooms. The Richmond Education Association kicked off this week of celebration on Friday, November the fourteenth, with a member appreciation event where we celebrated the profession of education, organizing our members to affect change, and providing every child with a quality public education. This year, the Richmond Education Association plans to reinforce the American Education Week's theme, "Great Public Schools: A Basic Right and Our Responsibility," as we embark upon changing the climate. We plan to continue to reinforce this thing until a change comes in Richmond in providing a basic right to our children for a great public school and taking seriously our responsibility of providing a great public education to all students. Join us. Do your part. If we all do just our part, think of the difference we can make for the good of every child in Richmond Public Schools. So join us in creating great public schools: A Basic Right and Our Responsibility. Thank you.
My name is Tom Hartman. I'm speaking as an individual. I want to catch up on some thank yous. Number one, I want to thank Dr. Bedden for getting the downstairs bathrooms at Ginner Park fixed last year ASAP. No more horrible smell. No more teachers fearing they will not live long enough to have children. No more you-know-what all over the boys' room floor. Do the teachers walk around being thankful? Of course not. Their attention has moved on to other things. No one has mentioned the much-needed improvement. This is actually as it should be. This brings me to a general point. I tried to count the number of variables in the RPS system, each of which has to be correct for the system to work optimally. When I got to two billion squared, I ran out of time. The point is, when one thing goes wrong, when one incident makes headlines and the evening news, at least two billion squared minus one can be presumed to be going correctly. So very much is right. Number two. Thank you to all the staff who implemented the transformation of our bathrooms. You did a timely and impeccable job. The little elementary students at Ginner Park are no more conscious of you or the improvement in their bathrooms than they are of the other two billion squared minus one variables, but it makes a difference, a mighty difference. The quality of their environment determines to ever so large an extent the quality of their learning, and so the quality of their lives. Most heroes are unsung, so it is and so it shall be. Number three, I thank the school board and Dr. Bedden together, the team of ten, for making such huge inroads in priority number one, restoring or perhaps instituting for the first time a general RPS condition of trust. Dr. Bedden's banner, "Always professional, never personal," hangs in the Ginner Park conference room. I'm not sure what it means, but I know that I like it. There is rigor in the air now. It is a cooler air than before, but this is good. The important warmth is not an atmospheric, but a quality of heart that contains both meanings of heart, love and courage.
Good evening, school board members. Dr. Bedden, my name is Gregory Day, and I'm here today representing, speaking on behalf of the Richmond Coalition for Quality Education. Two things that we want to talk about today. One is the rezoning that you are going ready to get into discussion about. We've heard much about this rezoning. You want to rezone secondary schools, which include high school and elementary school. Keep in mind, you just went through a rezoning, and I want to remind all of you that there is still a lawsuit out there on the first rezoning that you have done, and I think that the public needs to know that that lawsuit has not gone away. I was reading in the newspaper, and I want people to keep that in mind, that there were some things that transpired with this lawsuit, but they were untruths. We will tell you that there is a lawsuit with people that are named in the lawsuit. And I was at the last school board meeting in the back, and I heard you all say that you want the rezoning to come underneath of the Facilities Maintenance Task Group, which consists of Kristen Lawson and Kimberly Gray. Those are two people that are named in a lawsuit that has not been heard. Please, please, please don't make the same mistake. We're not saying that you can't rezone, but we want you to be, do it right and know what you're doing. But the first thing is, you don't put people in charge of anything that are named in a lawsuit. Come on, you are the school board. We're not going to make this a joke. So when you think about rezoning, Dr. Bedden has staff that can rezone. I don't know who's on the board knows about rezoning. So do it the right way. Put yourselves on the back burner right now because there's a lawsuit out there. And we're talking about Benford. I know some people are here from Benford. I'm friends with some people that are here from Benford. And I heard about the meeting that was held at Benford. You know, I didn't go to the meeting, but I did hear about the meeting at Benford. Please, don't play with our children. If you're going to rezone Fox Elementary, if you're going to rezone Holton, whatever you plan on doing, make sure that the divide is done correctly. Don't hurt any other children when you do this. The Coalition, if you're here tonight, can you please stand? I'm speaking on behalf of the Coalition. If you're here tonight, if you would just stand, the Coalition and anybody that's here, and to let you know, the Coalition, we're here tonight to support one of our own, and that's Ms. Mamie Taylor. Mamie Taylor, we're here in support of you, our fifth district school board representative, because of the information that has gone out and what has happened and transpired. One of the things we do as a coalition, so you all can know, we leave Ms. Taylor out of this type of information. We do. We don't want her to, she's on the school board, and we're not going to compromise her. No way about it are we going to do that. Secondly, the constituency policy, let me talk about that for a moment. I think it's a great thing to do, is to have a constituency policy. I've looked at it. But I would hope you would take into consideration the wording, people. The wording. Don't throw away all your rights to, and I hate to say it this way, but I have another way to say it, to Dr. Bedden. If we put you all in office, we want to call you. If a parent has a problem, they should be able to call their school board representative. Think about it. We're not saying that it's a bad idea, but look at the wording. I think right now the school board has a divide going on, and I think that we're just doing things because of the divide or we're acting out on feelings. Don't let a new school board come in and have to reverse what you've done. Be serious about what you do. So let's look at that constituency policy a little more. I know you all voted on it. I know it passed, but you need to look at the wording. It looks like we're trying to censure people. Let's not play these games. Don't do that to each other. Just come together, and Ms. Taylor, we're going to be here for you. We're going to stand with you, beside you, and your pastor is here with you tonight who believe in you, and we're going to fight with you for the right of all children, because that's all you're doing is fighting for the right of all children. I'm so sorry there's a divide on this board. Don't let Greg Day or the Coalition stand in your way. Come together. Come together as a board. It may not, some of you may say, well, he don't want that. Yes, I do.
Thirty seconds.
Come together as a board. Listen to each other, but don't make that mistake. I'm going to caution you now. Don't make the mistake with rezoning. I don't think that Kristen Lawson or Kimberly Gray should have anything to report back to you right now about rezoning. That's what you're asking. I don't want, they shouldn't even collect the data for it. Give it, turn that over to Dr. Bedden. There are other school board members who's not named in that lawsuit that can handle it. Thank you so much. Have a good meeting.
Good evening. My name is Tom Davis, and I'm one of the teachers representing Benford Middle School. We're coming this evening to address the issue of its future and to also find out more information about the future direction that is being planned for Benford Middle School. Our presence here shows two points, that we're dedicated to the profession of teaching and to our commitment to advance every student to reach their personal best. From the frontline perspective, we unashamedly deal with multiple challenges and rise above every obstacle to show that we are teachers who will work until progress is made. People who do not understand how dedicated we are to our school, system, and students may find it easy to reduce our time and talents to numbers that may rise or fall below an expected end. We know the plans we have to help our students and the school prosper. We are the driving force creating a school that takes our jobs very seriously. We are not only professionals, but we also make it personal because we realize the future of us is in our children. So we give one hundred and twenty-five percent each and every day that we come to school because we realize that if we fail the children, then we fail ourselves. And nobody within the walls of Benford has ever committed themselves to failing the children. It's more than just a job. It is our passion. It is what we've dedicated our time and our lives to. We make sacrifices each and every day because we know that the payoff may not be today, but it'll be tomorrow by the students that we produce. So we're asking that as you are discussing the future of Benford Middle School, that you would be so kind to include us in the discussions so that we would know how to better help educate the students that attend our schools. All we want to do is be a part of the decision-making process, if possible, so that when people hear about Benford Middle School, they will not hear the derogatory reports that are being put out there. They will not hear the negative, but they will hear the positive reports and remember that we are the pride of the fan. Thank you.
Just a reminder to folks in the audience, I know it's nice to applaud, but if you could please refrain from applauding, show your, express your support in another way, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening, Vice President, School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Bedding. I would like to speak also on the rezoning process for Benford Middle. I really think as a board, you need to look back and correct phase one, then move forward. Phase one has not been properly rezoned correctly, and in the papers, it seems to be a urgent for the next budget cycle. That's the wrong answer. This is not an urgent need for the next budget cycle because you expeditiously zone phase one without a budget. The urgency for the next year budget should be FY two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and seventeen proposed projects for the schools. You know, the ones that you forgot in last year's budget, like the furniture lighting, the roofs repairs, the track repairs, the system. I'm talking about this three-page proposed budget that I saw no one included on the budget. I was there when you did your budget. You did not include this. You cannot blame it on city council for your budget. You had already proposed this, and your proposed projects, you did not even add up into your budget. So what is the layout for Benford Middle School? To take Linwood, Holton, and Wimfox, both with the highest percentage of white students, and both have the lowest economics disadvantaged students, and create another IB program? I know you don't have to worry about incorrect zip codes, supply buses, or a large enough population because it's all there for you, but you got to worry about school diversity and equity, and that's what I'm looking at. Why haven't you discussed this with the parents of the two hundred and fourteen students that still attend there? Why did you have to do it so secretly so that no one would know? You didn't even discuss it with the community. You didn't put that in the paper that you had your secret meeting, did you? None of you did. So that's what you should have did, because the first thing, Benford was an IB program at the beginning. It was one of the best schools here in Richmond, model school. As soon as children, different children from different areas start coming, oh, we stopped sending our kids to Benford and it turned into a regular Richmond Public School. But now you want to change it to another model school. But let me tell you something. It won't happen because, see, you see, you want a proportion zoning by piecemeal. If I send you an email or claim, if I complain in Style Magazine, we're good at IB program, won't we? But see, what I want to see is, I want to see a pre-K in all schools. And this is a federal program, which I can't understand is, if it's a federal program, why do our children have to apply to a federal program to go to a pre-K zone school, and then they got to wait on a list in their zoning area? Let's think about our pre-K. We're not discussing that. Have you sat down with the city councils to see what is the, what is the new plans for the housing projects? Have you looked at demographics here? No, you haven't. And I'm with Mr., I'm with Mr. Gray back there. I do not want your former mates who were on there, Kim Gray and all of us who get emails at night time for no reason. Let's talk about that.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Marty Jewell. Getting hot up in here. The whole idea of rezoning, having gone through the last one, I think it's natural that people would be suspicious, particularly when we hear or read one day that we're going to rezone our secondary schools, and no other school has been mentioned except Benford, Benford, Benford. How many hamsters do we get to that? We know that their designs on Benford. We know that Albert Hill was the go-to school for white folks in Richmond. Now that it's full, you need an overflow. Benford. If I'm wrong, you're going to prove me wrong at some point, but I'm going with this because now I'm hearing, well, Benford has to be, something got to be done with it, clothes, repurpose, this or that because of low enrollment. I've got your enrollment numbers. Five years ago, it was three hundred and eighty-nine. Last year was two hundred and fifty-seven. This year is two hundred and sixteen. How do you lose that much enrollment unless it's done on purpose? I'm told that this year, the beginning of this year, first day, the principal stood outside waiting for additional buses because all his kids weren't there. We learned that a hundred to two hundred children were reassigned somewhere he never even knew. Y'all, there's some dog in this cat. And, and we're not going to let you do this again without letting you know that we're watching. And so we've got a lot of work to do here. I've always said, I'm on the record years ago, saying we need a superintendent who can devise a school system that incorporates all of our children, particularly all of our white kids. We got as many children not in Richmond Public Schools as we have in public schools. That's scary number. And we've done very little to fix that problem. We've got an opportunity to do it. Look, I've been bumping around this town for a long time, and I can tell you that while other jurisdictions had desensitizing sessions with students, parents, teachers, and others, Richmond never had that when it came to the question of race. We've never had a public discussion, not once, on how we can all together make our school system better. That would be the best way to go and do this rezoning as a process and not as a hit. We'll hit back. Thanks.
Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent, members of the board, I believe that obedience is better than sacrifice, so I made sure that I signed the list here. My name is Charles Willis, Chairman of the Multicultural Task Force. I come to you today, and I'm very, really not happy to be here. I'm really not. Comments that I'm going to make, I want you to know that I'm extremely serious. The comments are extremely important to this community here in Richmond. It's important, we believe, to the school board. It's important, we believe, to the School Board. It is definitely important and dear to my heart. It concerns me how important the Multicultural Task Force had become all of a sudden to many of the Board members, when its task force was busy doing its work. And I'm not here to say who was engaged or who not, but I know who the first Board members were that came to the meeting, and that concerns, and I thank you. There has been several conversations, emails, and correspondence that went on that you Board members have been privileged to that has not been light, has not been nice. I'm not here to slander. I'm not here to talk about that. There were comments that were made in the emails that were addressed to the Multicultural Task Force that I thought, that in my humble opinion, was very inappropriate and unnecessary. I continue to share with you Board members that folks are being intentionally misinformed. I stand here and say far from the truth, but I have to keep it real and say, somebody is lying. And I don't like to call folks a liar, but somebody has intentionally lied on this task force. We have been denied by this Board and its leadership to bring presentations to you on three occasions. But at this point in, two weeks ago, not this one, but the one on 17th floor, the Superintendent was allowed to give a presentation to this Board about the Multicultural Task Force, unacceptable to the task force. We have asked you on numerous occasions, could we please bring these presentations to you, that we strongly believe would have cleared a lot of the misunderstanding that some of you all have received. We further say that this task force has not attempted to overstep our boundaries or to unveil anything that has to do with the opening of the Welcome Center. The Welcome Center was the brainchild and recommendations of the Multicultural Task Force, point blank, along with many other recommendations. The task force simply was asked by the Chair in his absence that we would come back to this Board with top priorities. I'm sad to say that the presentation that I gave each and every one of you all in a folder like this had the top priorities already listed, which meant both folks did not read it. This is sad to say to the School Board that I love and I want to represent in the community. You folks did not read it because it simply had the recommendations. It had top priorities, and I have a copy of it nailed before me that says, again, top priorities. Mr. Born asked me in the hallway, he said, "Mr. Willis, bring us back some numbers." Mr. Born, in that report, it has the numbers. So, I don't understand whether conspiracy to destroy the Multicultural Task Force, and that's exactly what I like to call it, is going forward. However, the Multicultural Task Force is made up of community leaders, partnerships, businesses, and folks that are very concerned about the educational process that is going on in Richmond Public Schools. And although there are folks that believe we have overstepped our boundaries with the possibility of meeting with the community just to hear their input, which this is what we are charged to do, let me share with you a little something about what was said in our statement that we presented to the Board. Community outreach, develop, is to build a strong relationship with the community is essential. Develop a multicultural advocacy group, whole-school meetings, and community events. So, I close with my last minutes of saying that a Welcome Center, we thank you, we thank you for taking the recommendations to have a Welcome Center, and we thank you for the recommendation of having a Welcome Center in Southside Plaza. But to say that we are overstepping our boundaries to meet with the community, to hear what they want to see at that Welcome Center, is unfounded and unheard of. Again, please listen to the concerns of the Welcome Center, I mean, the task force, and we ask you to come to our meeting tomorrow. This is not our Board or our task force. This is y'all's task force. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is Item 3, Minutes, Presentation of Official Business and Items for Action. 3.01 is to approve the minutes of the January 23rd and January 30th, 2014 meetings. Those minutes were distributed to you earlier for your review. They were also on Board Docs. I just ask that you approve them at this time.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion passes with five ayes, two abstentions. The next item is 3.02.
Excuse me, Ms. Chair, before we move forward, I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Epps.
As it relates to the minutes, since we've gone to Board Docs, can anyone let us know how soon the minutes will be presented in a fashion that they reflect the meeting shortly
The goal is to get the minutes of the current meeting up within the week that that meeting is held. As minutes are done now, draft minutes are placed out on the web for review as we are trying to get caught up. So, there are some minutes of current meetings out on your website as draft on Board Docs.
And so, then, does, even with this Board Docs, does it necessitate that we continue to receive these minutes? Can the Board Docs actually be the document, can that be the representation of the meeting? It's made available within two days for us to view. Do we need a written document of the meetings, I guess is what my question is. So, we have to have that written documentation?
You need to have minutes.
You need to have minutes. And as an action, the Board needs to approve those minutes so that it can be official and the Chair sign off on them. Okay. I'm just concerned, we're approving minutes from January of 2014, and this is November.
All right, next item on the agenda.
The next item is 3.02, Receive for Action, A Recommendation to Add Darian Grant to the Richmond Public Schools Education Foundation.
Ms. Lewis, did you have hard copies to pass out? So, just to give you all an overview, we have to approve all of the members that are appointed to the Foundation Board. I emailed this out this afternoon. This is their Board recommendation to us for your approval. The head of the Foundation is gonna be coming to our next meeting and doing an update. So, if you have questions specific to the Foundation and what's going on with the Foundation, I try to go to most of their Board meetings, but obviously, the day-to-day, they can give more of an update than I can. Okay. I think Ms. Taylor had her hand up first.
Is it possible for us to move this into our next meeting because of receiving this so late in the day?
It's the consensus of the Board.
Okay, I'd like to move this to the December 1st meeting.
Is that a motion, Mrs. Taylor?
Yes, it is.
Second.
The motion was made by Ms. Taylor. It was seconded by Ms. Harris-Mohammed. Did you want a roll call vote, Madam Vice Chair?
Discussion. Ms. Harris-Mohammed.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I am in agreement with my colleague from the Fifth. Because we received this information late this afternoon, I think it just would be wise and professional of us not to continue the act of moving into haste decisions. So, I think we should discuss this or vote on this for action at our December 1st meeting.
Mr. Sturdervan.
I think similar to H.R., we should not be vetting individuals who are nominated to serve on a Board that is independent of this School Board. We certainly have the power to vote them up or down, but this gentleman is clearly very qualified. He's a former RPS student and has received, I think, the highest award that RPS gives. So, I think it would slow down the work of the Education Foundation to push this off, and I don't really see a good basis to provide the sort of oversight that's been provided in other areas that are not the role of the Board.
Ms. Epps.
I'd like to speak to the fact that I appreciate that the Executive Director is gonna make a presentation on December, our meeting in December. My concern is that we're being asked to approve this individual, but when the money is being moved around within the Foundation, we're not asked to approve that. So, I would like some clarity on, really, what is the role of this Board with that Foundation?
And we can ask her to outline that. I mean, they have a set of bylaws, and they, you know, are 501(c)(3), so they govern That's about as much as I know, but she can go into more detail next time. Ms. Taylor?
I would like to also know what the process is, because I can remember last year, two proposed individuals came before the Board without the Board even being aware of it until that very moment. I would like to know how did they get chosen for such a position? Is there someone that we as individual Board members can recommend? Who else is vying for a spot on that particular Board? So, you know, I appreciate what my colleague, Mr. Sturdervan, has to say, but I would like to be privy to that same information that he's speaking to before we move forward. I think in all fairness, I think all Board members should have that same opportunity, and the information that you sent out was extremely late in the day, and I don't think it would be fair to ask us to move forward, and I don't think waiting until December 1st is asking too much. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Harris-Mohammed.
And I agree, and I receive in this, Mr. Sturdervan comments in the spirit in which they were given, but if we're about business, and I guess we define transparency as we see fit, but if we're about transparency, then, first of all, why should I have to receive this information about a high-stellar individual 25, 30 minutes before a Board meeting and then have the copy in my seat or in my area once I arrive for the meeting? I don't have time to read it. I am in no way saying that this man is not stellar. I am in no way saying that he does not have qualifications to be on that Board. I am in no way trying to micromanage or vet anything, but if you all want the respect as Board members, I think we all need to have the same respect. I don't think the Foundation is gonna break down in pieces by December 1st. So, I think it would be prudent of us to wait until December 1st. And if we just rush into it because of something that a Vita says, then that's a concern of mine. I would like to wait until December 1st. I could not even get through the first paragraph of reading this man's information. That's all I think I'm hearing several Board members say. I have not heard any of us that have spoken about this say he's not qualified. I'm just saying, if the relationship is supposed to be professional, then we need information like this prior to a Board meeting. That's all I'm saying.
Dr. Jones.
Just briefly, I would respect my colleague's motion. Outside of the veto that sits in front of me, I'm not familiar with this gentleman at all, or why, I'm sure he's qualified, or why he was, his name was put forward to us. And so, I'm gonna respect my colleague's request that this be delayed.
Madam Clerk, can you do a roll call vote, please?
The motion on the floor by Ms. Taylor is to move this vote until the December 1st meeting. It was seconded by Ms. Harris-Mohammed. Mr. Sturdervan?
No.
Ms. Gray?
No.
Mr. Born? Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Harris-Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney-Epps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
I was gonna say, because there's a tie vote, and all of your members are not present, by the state code, this question has to pass until the next meeting. So, it doesn't pass or fail, but the actual question itself to table will pass till December
The next item is 3.03, Discuss Scheduling a Meeting for December 8th, 2014.
Okay. Board members, the Superintendent had contacted us a couple of weeks ago about pulling together a meeting based on priority schools, and we have tentatively scheduled that for December 8th at 6:00. I just wanted to put it out there so that the public could be informed, see if there's any major scheduling difficulties. Right now, we only have one School Board meeting scheduled for the month of December, and that's December 1st meeting. So, this would be a special meeting. We would just discuss priority schools. Dr. Bedden, you have anything you want to say about it?
Just that we really need to have the conversation as we plan for next school year, and this is a meeting we've tried to get several dates scheduled that has pretty much started in October, the conversation, I think, and not been able to get a meeting scheduled in November, so it would be helpful to get it in.
Mr. Born?
Thank you. Not having seen any tentative agenda for December 1st, but as I said in response of email when Dr. Bedden sent out the request, this should be our number-one priority, our number-two priority, and our number-three priority. And so, my question is this, is there anything on the December 1 agenda of our already-scheduled meeting that we could not defer and take this up sooner rather than later, instead of having a special meeting on the 8th?
We can look at it, but we'll still need to have, are you talking about flip-flopping them? I mean, because we still need a Board meeting. We have a lot of stuff on the December 1st meeting already, so we'll still need a regular Board meeting.
My question is not whether or not we have a lot of things to do, it's what is the magnitude of those things that we need to do? And if we have these schools that we need to talk about, we can't wait any longer. It's already been just about a month since Dr. Bedden sent out the email. And so, I can't imagine anything else that we could discuss on December 1st that is more important than this. So, I would just urge us to really consider wiping the agenda for December 1st and making I was just asking, Ms. Harris-Mohammed, what on our tentative agenda for December 1st is more important than this, that we couldn't just use the December 1st meeting date to talk only about these schools and this transformation that needs to happen, and what the options are, what the lay of the land is? That was just simply my question. And then I followed up, I don't think we need to wait. I would urge us to consider that.
So, if the Board likes, I can get with Dr. Bedden, Ms. Lewis, and we can sort it out by the end of the week and make a recommendation. And then, if anybody has any major scheduling issues, please let me know before you leave And also, one other scheduling thing, please, if you have not responded to the next Board training, please do that. Ms. Epps, did you have a comment?
Yes. I support definitely my colleague from the Third, that I don't know that there is any other priority, and I guess Dr. Bedden And I guess, Dr. Bennet, I was going to pose a question to you, and I appreciate that you've been trying to get this on our agenda, at least since October. And this is really just more of a statement that we know we've already moved one principal at the elementary school level, and now we're talking about Benford. I think it would be beneficial for the entire board had we known from the beginning, okay, what are all the schools we're looking at that priority, focus, schools in need of improvement, that that inform our agenda? That, that has been my concern, that we don't have this information and we're talking about everything else. So I think definitely this should be a priority for December the 1st. And Ms. Larson, when is the next governance training supposed to be scheduled?
I think Ms. Lewis sent out a few dates and asked folks to respond. And she can get back to you offline about that.
Okay. So I'd like to reiterate that two priorities that I see them right now is the continuation of this governance training, as well to get on top of what's happening in these schools.
Dr. Bennet?
What you just described was the intended purpose of that meeting. To, because some of the questions that we get when we are standing before the State Board in VDOE, in quote, "At what point do you, as a local district, take aggressive corrective action to change the course of schools before you stand before us?" And the presentation and the conversation is about, was intended to be about, actions that we need to try to control locally before we're standing before the State Board and having someone tell us what we want or what will be done inside of our schools. So that was the purpose and intent of that meeting, to talk about those things that myself and the leadership team are seeing in our schools. As you know, Reed was triggered by federal guidelines that was short notice to all of us. You know, as we see more schools heading that path and having gone through it, we're trying to get in front of it. At the end of the day, it's all about, you know, performance and/or growth, which is the only reason that we were able to withstand the loss of accreditation at three out of our four schools, where they were able to see significant growth in with Armstrong and Bouchard, which actually exited, Armstrong and Bouchard exited priority status. Our communication to our schools is that we do not expect a school to go from, say, 30-something percent performance and jump to 70, else we'd be very suspicious. But we do have to have sustained growth as a measure for progress and success. And, you know, so it's a combination of academics, it's a combination of culture and climate issues that we're finding in some of the schools, that we really do need to have those personnel conversations. You could very well, if you, so choose possibly, one suggestion I can give is that December 1st, do the same model format that you've done here. And start that conversation from 6:00 to 7:00, and then begin your regular meeting at 7:00. You also need to be aware that the December 1st, because you only have one meeting in December, with the new schools that have gone into priority and other things, that we have to select turnaround partners. And that is going to happen on December 1st, which, as you may recall, those are anywhere from 10 to 15, you've got four schools that got to get turnaround partners now. So that's at least an hour, depending on how many questions that you pose regarding it. And that turnaround partner selection is a prerequisite for any of the funding coming from the federal government to the state, to the schools. So don't select one, you don't get the money, because that was the model Virginia turned in to the federal government. So we could very well try to do the same format you did here and just do the front end for about 6:00 to 7:00, to have those conversations, to give you some data and heads up of what we're thinking in the planning process. Because some of them, depending if we take the direction, will need planning for the second semester to make them effective, to even do them in the fall. And will need time for it to be worked on.
Dr. Jones?
Madam Vice Chair, I just wanted to log, register my support for taking up the priority school conversation on December 1st, if we can figure out a way to maneuver some things on the agenda that day. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
The next item is 3.04, discuss the Virginia School Boards Association Delegate Handbook.
Ms. Harris-Mohammed, I think this is yours.
I didn't know what was on it, so until I saw the agenda, I didn't have to move this to another meeting.
Okay.
Because I forwarded the information in my-
Excuse me, colleagues. The email came to all of us, and I forwarded it to Ms. Lewis to make sure that we all received it. So this is something that our attorney, our chairman, and the superintendent can discuss. I am the delegate, but, which I'll be going this week, but the information was already forwarded to us.
Okay.
To know what the actions are going to be on Thursday.
Okay.
Do I need to repeat that? Do I need to rephrase it, summarize?
I guess, I think when we were pulling together the agenda, there was some sort of, we thought there was some sort of requirement that we have a public discussion of this.
No. It was information that school boards needed to be aware of, that actions will be taken Thursday in Williamsburg at the annual convention.
Okay.
So it's not anything that I need to present. It was some legal stuff in there. That's why I mentioned Ms. Lilly. But it's not something that I need to present. The information as a board, we need to be familiar with. But I'm more than happy to bring the information back that we voted on Thursday and present that.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Great. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Next item is 3.05, receive an update from school board members attending conferences, the 2014 Summit on Courageous Conversation, the Women's Educational Leadership in Virginia, and the NSBA Conference.
Ms. Harris-Mohammed, you want to go first?
Yes.
Okay.
I want to apologize in advance for having my back towards the public. I was told I could not present from my seat, so just bear with me as I present to the board. So again, I apologize. This is not how I engage in conversation with the public. So if we can, is it possible that we, not all the way, but you know, just a little bit, so we can see. So my trip, and I really would like for the board's undivided attention during my presentation, because I did take time to prepare a presentation. So I feel as though that you all need to engage during the presentation. As you're all aware, you all approved me to attend New Orleans workshop. It was a two-day, very long, intensive, 10-hour workshop on courageous conversations about race. This program is a two-part session. I completed the first session, so it is really, okay, hold on for one second. Okay, there we go. It is talking about race and the part that race plays in making equitable decisions in a school district. So we're in a situation now that we're talking about emotional topics such as rezoning. We have been in conversation, talking about how certain populations and ethnic groups are being treated or lack thereof in our school district. So as a district, we're going to have to decide very quickly if we have not articulated that, how we're going to move forward beyond diversity. And because this was a two-day workshop, of course, in 10 minutes or 15 minutes, I cannot give you two-day, 10-hour workshop in 15 minutes. But I do encourage you, though, to do some research, go through the information on courageous conversations. They have a wealth of knowledge, they have a wealth of resources. So during your free time that we have, try to do that. So, beyond diversity overview, just a summary very quickly. We talked about, do we have the will to educate all children? That's a very valid question. What are our beliefs about student achievement when it comes with, when it entails race? Why talk about race? Do we have a belief statement as a school board in terms of how we're going to deal with situations when race is involved? What about race in your life? And this was a, this was an activity that we did on day one. Then we also discussed strengths and challenges when having courageous conversations about race, a view of this systemic racism that may be prevalent. And then we also talked about white as color, a culture, and a consciousness. But the two things that I'm going to talk very briefly about this evening are the first two bullets that are highlighted in black. Do we have the will to educate all children? And notice that "all" is all caps. And then what are our beliefs about student achievement? Why is it important to have courageous conversations about race? Because, believe it or not, as much as we do not like to have these conversations, like talking about religion and race or whatever at the dinner table, it is a part of our everyday magnet in our school districts. It is what it is. And the purpose of that is to have a protocol for engaging and sustaining and deepening dialogue about race, and an essential tool for effectively examining schooling and improving student achievement. Now, some people may believe that race does not have an impact on student achievement. I'm here to tell you that it does. And there is a wealth of research out there that speaks to why they both correlate with each other amongst other factors. Do we have the will to educate all children? I believe, as an educator, I do have the will. I do have the will to educate all children. But I can't speak for everybody else that's in education. I can't speak on behalf of this board. I only can speak on behalf of Shonda M. Harris-Mohammed. And we're going to have to, I heard someone say earlier that we were a board divided. And that model or that behavior, whatever, you know, someone may define it as, if we have heard a constituent say that, then it is, then it is something that we are, as a board, doing or not doing that has sent that message. So this is an opportunity that I believe, not as a board member, but also as an educator, that we can come together and have some positive consensus, particularly when we get ready to move into a very touchy issue of rezoning. It is true that we have lived in a society that has been oppressive to many minorities, and that oppression has somehow articulated into the classroom. And we are going to have to take a stance on how we're going to continue to deal with that. We've had some, some issues within our first couple of years as a board that we have dealt with, but this quote really hits it for me. The knowledge and skills to educate all children currently exist. They do. Because we have lived in a historically oppressive society, we have. Educational issues tend to be framed as technical issues, which denies their political origin and meaning. That's a fact. There are no pedagogical barriers to teaching and learning when willing people are prepared and made available to children. That's a fact. If we embrace a will to excellence, we can deeply, deeply reconstructure educational ways that will enable teachers to release the full potential of all of our children. So when we're making decisions for children, we have to make decisions for all children and not the children that are in certain zip codes. Courageous conversation is just that. The two-day seminar, we talked about four agreements, six conditions, and compass in order to engage, sustain, and deepen intra-racial and interracial dialogue about race, which, again, is very difficult conversation to have. Racial identity and institutional racism for the purpose of examining schooling and improving student achievement. So throughout this, you should have heard a recurring theme, student achievement. Does race impact student achievement? Beyond diversity, the four agreements that we talked about. In order for any school board in the United States of America to remain steadfast on the cause, we have to stay engaged. We have to experience some discomfort. You have to speak your truth and expect and accept non-closure. And hopefully, in the next couple of months or so, we're continuing to talk about and engage in governance training, we're at some point are going to have to deal with our own truths as a board. In order for us to grow individually, in order for us to grow as a board, if we want this school district really to be at the top of its A-game, then the school board needs to be at the top of her A-game. And we're going to have to deal with that, and that's my truth. Race in my life, race in your life. This is what we have to deal with. How much is my life impacted by race? And this was an activity that we did, and hopefully, we can do this activity as a board in the near future. How much is our students' lives impacted by race? Very much so. A gentleman said earlier, there is discrimination within your race. It is. Does race impact student achievement? There we go again. We're talking about student achievement. And I just really believe that you cannot address racial achievement disparities without dealing with race, period. You're going to have to be able to deal with it at some point, particularly in the district that we have right now, even though we have the minority, the majority, but there's still some, some issues going on within that ethnic group as well. This was another activity that we did, to what degree am I conscious of the impact of race on my life? Well, for me, I'm very conscious. Very. I'm extremely conscious. I'm very much, well, I don't look like everybody else. But just because I don't have pigmentation in my skin does not mean that I'm not educated. That does not mean that I don't have class. That does not mean that, you know, I can't hold an intellectual conversation. But these are some of the barriers that our children face every day. And I know you can't see this, but racial consciousness, this is also in board docs. And it just talks about how conscious and semi-conscious and conscious are we about our race? And hopefully, again, we can talk about this in the next couple of months during our governance training if we are committed as a board. So I end, end the presentation with this. We see things not as they are, but as we are. And that's how we view our lens. And the reason I have that pretty little girl there, that was actually me when I was little, no, I'm just joking, that was not me. You know, almost looked like me, but anyhow. The reason I put that beautiful little girl there is because that's how we view ourselves. That's how children view themselves. So if we're comfortable jumping out of our own skin and dealing with what is really prevalent and what people had from discussing to move student achievement, and that is race, then I just firmly believe, and it's really impacted in my spirit, that we can really begin moving this district in the direction that we need to move it into. However, but everybody's going to have to play a part in that. That's not just the school board, but that's also the superintendent and his leadership team. If you have any questions and answers, any questions and answers that you may have from your questions that you may think you have, you can email me. And then also, I will send you a survey about the resources that I have gone over with you this evening. Again, this is a two-day, 10-hour workshop and the time allotted that was given to me. But I also want to share with you all, if we're really serious about dealing with equity issues in our district, I would recommend us getting a book. I think we all have enough money in our- I think we all have enough money in our constituent service fund to get the Equity Framework, Equity 101. This is an excellent book on dealing with equity and public education. So I really appreciate it. Thank you all so very much for your attentiveness. And if, again, if you have any questions, just email me.
Ms. Epps?
Oh yeah, just a comment, if I may. I'd like to thank Ms. Harris Muhammad for that presentation and appreciate another one of our colleagues taking advantage of the opportunity to attend the Courageous Conversation training. As you all know, Ms. Taylor and I went out to Portland, Oregon, and received the first part of that training. So it was good to hear Ms. Harris Muhammad reinforce what we had learned. I'm hoping that our takeaway will be that our other colleagues can take advantage of this courageous conversation-type training. We're working with Richmond Equality for Equity Initiative with Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities. I think they may be very equipped to provide us with that training as a part of governance. And it's here in the city of Richmond. But the most important piece that I'd like for us to take away is that the purpose, I know that I attended this training, was to be able to fulfill my responsibility as a board member. And as you all are well aware, I have been speaking to writing policy that addresses diversity and equity in the school system. So again, I'm very heartened that Ms. Harris Muhammad took advantage of that training and would encourage us as a board to do something very similar, perhaps closer to home.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Harris Muhammad. Thank you, Ms. Epps. That was a very thorough presentation. I personally appreciate it. What else do we have on the list?
There was the Women's Education Leadership in Virginia. Is that you?
Yes. Can I do this from my seat?
Of course.
Yeah. You all are wearing me out tonight, Grant. No, I, I attended a leadership conference for women in leadership in Virginia, in Lynchburg, Virginia. It was very enlightening. We, we talked about women in educational leadership. That was the topic. We talked about some barriers. We talked about some hidden truths. We talked about some challenges that women face when they enter into educational leadership. I, myself, being a Black woman in leadership, has faced some of those challenges. So it really encouraged me to stay and remain the course of not only serving as a school board representative, but also serving as an educator in my district. And it, women have it very, very, it's very difficult for us. And we talked about, again, some hidden truths that we have to deal with. We talked about equity. I just briefly talked about that. We talked about equity and pay. We talked about equity in obtaining leadership positions. We talked about, one, one of the most sensitive issues that we talked about and addressed was women supporting each other in leadership positions, particularly African-American women, and not serving as the crab in the barrel, if you will, and trying to surpass that, trying to grow past that. So this was, again, an excellent opportunity for me to not only network, but to say to me that, yes, I can. And because I know that I can, I'm going to make sure that you can as well. And I'm not going to do anything to hinder you from, from moving in your leadership position. Anything that I can do, I will support you in that. If every single one, if every single one of us, as women in leadership, have that motto, oh my gosh, we could move this world. So we, we have to get past some different things within us. So it was, it was a good conference. I am a member now and look forward to doing a presentation for them in the future.
Okay. Thank you for that. Ms. Lewis, what, what else was on that list?
The NSBA Conference, and Ms. Pinkney Epps has confirmed that she will report at your next meeting.
Okay.
Three, and that was all I had.
Okay.
The next item. Item is 3.06. Receive action, receive for action school board travel and district activity requests. We do have several requests this evening. Let's see. Mrs. Harris Muhammad had submitted a request to go to the NSBA Conference, as well as Ms. Taylor, and that has not been decided. The estimated cost had been given to you again this evening. Mrs. Taylor also submitted a request for district activity events. Two meetings in her district, and she's estimating a cost of $500 for those. And Mrs. Pinkney Epps has submitted a request for district activities in her district at an estimated cost of $819.25.
Okay. Ms. Lewis?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I was having a side conversation. What, are you waiting for action from us?
Well, on the, I'm sorry, the NSBA Conference that Ms. Harris Muhammad and Ms. Taylor had asked to go to, the motion was made to approve the travel, but with only one person going. And so that decision would have to be made as to how you all want to do that. And then the district events, we do need a vote on those.
Okay. And we have those in front of us?
You do not. Mrs. Pinkney Epps and Mrs. Taylor submitted theirs to me just a few minutes ago. Ms. Pinkney Epps' estimated amount for her district events is 819.25, and Ms. Taylor's estimated amount for her district events is 500.
Ms., let's start with the NSBA Conference first. Okay. Mr. Born?
Just a question. The events that Ms. Taylor and Ms. Epps are putting on in their districts, are they, will they occur before our next meeting so that we might get some firmer numbers? Or, just a question.
Mine, mine is for a community meeting. It's going to be for the price of food. I have no idea into its purchase, so it'll be just reimbursements after I bring in the receipts. So they just asked me to give an estimate, because, you know, that's not my industry. But it'll be me paying for it and getting reimbursed per what the actual costs are.
And Ms. Taylor, you gave two dates of December 3rd and December 10th. Are those the two dates? You have December 3rd through 10th. Is it December 3rd and 10th?
No, I, I have to see what the availability is in the schools. So it'll be contingent upon where the space is available.
Okay. So.
If I can speak to Mr. Born's question.
Ms. Epps?
The, my request is regarding the parent check-in that you all approved previously. We had to change the date. It's coming up this Saturday, November the 22nd. The, it's $500 for the food, because we'll be serving breakfast and lunch. And he's giving me the thumbs up. I don't need any more detail.
Okay.
My apologies, the cost for Ms. Pinkney, Pinkney Epps's event is 819.25?
That's the estimated cost that she has submitted.
And so I just wanted the record to reflect, if you will, that there may be a typo on the actual printed document, which says 119.
She added to it and gave it to me. Thank you.
She coming to the party all late.
Does this include the flowers?
It does.
Okay.
I would move that we.
Okay.
I would move that we approve the estimated expenses or reimbursement amounts for the district events for Ms. Taylor and Ms. Epps.
Motion was made by Mr. Born, seconded by Dr. Jones, Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
No.
Mr. Born? Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Harris Muhammad? Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Motion passed, 7-1.
Okay. And the other issue that we need to resolve is the NSBA.
Yes.
So the last meeting, we voted to send one person there. And now we have two votes in front of us tonight. One to send Ms. Harris Muhammad and one to send Ms. Mamie Taylor. Ms. Gray?
I know Ms. Harris Muhammad had mentioned that she is waiting to find out if she's a presenter at the national conference.
I am not. We passed the deadline for that. I looked into it immediately and got the feedback to Mr. Coleman. And I apologize, I thought Mr. Coleman had communicated that.
No.
I do apologize, yes. We had to submit, the board had to submit approval for me to do that. So we were trying to backtrack and get the emails and, so, no ma'am. I would not be presenting.
Okay.
Or submitting an application to present.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Let me ask a second.
Ms. Gray?
Has anyone on this board ever been to the National School Board Association Conference?
Ms. Epps and Ms. Taylor went last March, right? This, this year. We're, we're voting for the conference for 2015, which I believe, is it in March?
It is.
Okay. So. Taylor?
I, I would just like to put on the record that the many conferences, well, not many, but the conferences that I've attended, there's never been an issue with multiple board members attending. But, you know, this board is what it is. And I just wanted the record to reflect that our practice has always been first come, first served, and that's the way this board has made it. I remember when we were trying to go to Portland, the statement that was made was that Ms. Pinkney Epps had already submitted her request. And then it came down to both Ms. Harris Muhammad and myself as to who would be able to attend. In this particular instance, I submitted my request on the 15th of October. I then came back to the board, and it was presented by our clerk on the 20th for the National School Board Association for 2015. There's only one, so there's not a whole lot of research to do on that. And that was presented to the board on the 20th. And my understanding is Ms. Harris Muhammad came the following day after my second request on the 21st and submitted a screenshot of the conference and her request to go as well. I would definitely encourage the board to reconsider the both of us going. But for the record, I put my request in twice prior to that. So I'll leave it up to the board to decide from here. But those are the facts, and that's how the board has always operated up to now.
Dr. Jones?
Well, we were, you know, we were each elected, you know, by our districts to represent them with clarity and with integrity. And if this is, you know, I don't want to get into these protracted discussions about, you know, travel. If, if this is how my colleagues want to allocate their constituent service funds, then that's up to them. We have a finite amount of resources, and when it's gone, it's gone. And I think that if, if they want to go and have the resources available to them to go, and they see it as beneficial to them and their constituents to go, then, you know, I'm not going to sit here and, you know, say that they shouldn't or they couldn't. And so if they have it and they can do it, we came up with this money for situations like this, it's, it's, it's up to them. And so I support their desire to go if that's what they want to do.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I motion that both Ms. Taylor and Ms. Harris Muhammad be approved to attend the, what is it? The NSBA Conference in March of 2015.
Second.
The motion was made by Mrs. Pinkney Epps, seconded by Dr. Jones, Mr. Sturtevant?
No.
Ms. Gray?
No.
Mr. Born? Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Harris Muhammad? Dr. Jones? Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
No.
And it is a tie vote, so that will carry over to your next meeting as the other one did. The next item on the agenda is item four.
Ms. Harris Muhammad?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Turn your mic on. Turn your mic on.
I'm sorry. Parliamentary procedure, Madam Attorney. I understand that it's moved, it has neither failed nor passed, it's moved to the next meeting. So what is the process of someone on, well, we don't have a losing side. So I, I don't want this to continue to move on when we have things to do in the district. So I would just not have the desire to attend. So how do we make that? I mean, how do we just take me off and allow Mrs. Taylor to go if that's the desire of the board? We can't keep bouncing around this issue.
Well, I can only recite what the law says. At 22.1-75, there was a tie vote. That was the vote. And so that question has to pass, because all of your members are not present tonight. But that question has to pass. Now, between now and December 1st, if you wish to take your name out of the running or what have you, then that's a decision that you can make. But, but the question has to pass. This is just part of the.
That's fine. And that, that's what I wanted you to, I wanted you to read what the statute said. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Anybody want me to read it for their?
I was going to ask, could Ms. Harris Muhammad make that motion right now?
That she remove her name?
Or that Ms. Taylor move that?
That would be a different question, so that's appropriate.
You're asking me to make a motion, or could I make a motion that Ms. Taylor goes to attend the conference? Okay, so I move that Ms. Taylor attend the NSBA Conference in March of 2015.
Second. And during your next meeting, you all need to deal with then either formally taking that off, off of the agenda then.
Okay, the motion was made by Mrs. Harris Muhammad that Mrs. Taylor attend the NSBA Conference in March 2015. It was seconded by Ms. Pinkney Epps. Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
No.
Mr. Born? Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Harris Muhammad? Dr. Jones? Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson? Motion passes 7-1. The next item is item four, Superintendent's Report, 4.01. Receive for action the Human Resources Actions.
Board members, you received through previous communication the Human Resource Actions. There was a question regarding the format. I would tell you, one way you can address that is if you actually download it or a PDF and not view it in it, it may actually turn it for you.
You responded to my question about having it.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
I was saying that, just address that. If you actually download the document to a PDF, then the PDF allows you to turn it so you can view it when you're using your PDF viewer. There is a addendum with three items that will be shared with you when you go into closed session. And if anyone needs a hard copy, I have five here, if they have problems viewing it electronically.
All right, Madam Clerk, next item.
The next item is four point oh two, receive a report on the trip to China.
Oh, I thought you were requesting that we go into close. Okay, all right, the superintendent says we don't have to go into close at the end, unless we have questions.
Regarding this, we don't, we have another issue, but-
Okay, all right. Board members, what's, what's the consensus? Yes, we can approve the actions now, or we can defer until after the closed session.
I move that we approve the HR agenda as presented.
Second.
Your mic. There were a couple of errors on this report, and I wanted to bring it to your attention before we approved it. I was trying to find Mr. Phillips.
Dr. Ben, can answer any questions that you have about HR actions, and if we need to discuss the-
I'm sure it was just an oversight, so whatever you think is best is fine.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. Is there, is there any discussion? Dr. Jones, we are considering the HR actions. There's a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded to approve the HR actions.
Do we have a hard copy?
Yep. All copies.
Okay, all right, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
The motion was made by Ms. Gray and seconded by, by Mr. Sturdervant to approve the HR actions with the addendum. Mr. Sturdervant?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Harris Mohammed? Dr. Jones? Mrs. Pinkney Epps? Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Motion passes, five yeses, three abstentions. The next item is four point zero two, receive a report on the trip to China.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Ben and administration are going to give a presentation on the trip to China.
Board members, while she brings up the copy for the public to see that was attached to board docs. To get you started, as you know, that myself and Associate Superintendent of Academic Services and the Partnership Coordinator were asked to visit... The presentation, yes. Xingzhou, China, which is a sister city of Richmond City. And previously, a conversation had started in a visit by Xingzhou, going back to the fall of 2013 with the previous administration. The purpose of the trip was to learn about the Chinese school system, to offer information and expertise on the American school system, and to establish a partnership between C-Star Foreign Language School and the Xingzhou Municipal Education Bureau, which is their version, I would probably give, is their governing body for education within Xingzhou. Just to give you an idea where Xingzhou is, it's in Hunan Province, which is, what, third or fourth in size, I believe, in China. Obviously, that means very large, I think eight point something million people in Hunan Province, and then Xingzhou being over a million residents. As I mentioned, a sister city of Richmond, it's a capital of Hunan Province, eight point six million first grade population. First through twelfth is one point four one million, with over fourteen hundred schools in it, and a kindergarten population of over three hundred thousand, and the city continues to grow. The work in education reform is being noted by their federal government, which was also in attendance and asked us to participate in a summit. C-Star School that was being featured, that has sent representatives to visit RPS back around fall of 2013 in collaboration with Virginia Commonwealth University. We actually were given a tour of the original school building. I had a meeting to discuss C-Star and RPS partnership, the idea of having dual enrollment English slash Mandarin classes, and then a teacher exchange program. The summit, which was held with Xingzhou Municipal Education Bureau, the Foreign Language School Director and Deputy Director, and then a combination of our three staff members. In front of you, you were provided a copy of the requested partnership agreement. One of the things I would note to you is that prior to all of us arriving, there had been a conversation with Richmond Public Schools about having a partnership. When we walked into the meeting, it was quite interesting, they had a lot of already planned out things that they thought we could just sign on and do, given that they have a lot more independence in their education system. The agreement that you have before you was an effort to not be disrespectful to their bureau, which was their government that came in attendance along with the local school officials, and change the language to intent, letting them know that we could not sign these agreements. For example, the agreement already had an expectation that we would provide five to eight teachers to go there next year and start teaching. Now, in exchange, they were going to send those teachers to start teaching Mandarin to our children. You know, I've had one teacher already run up to me and said, "I'll go." So, we concluded with a mutual agreement to pursue partnership opportunities as we had to get them to, kind of, as the kids would say, slow your roll and back up a little bit. Part of it was also cultural relevance and understanding of their heritage and their history, which included a visit to which they're very proud of, the home of the Shaolin Temple, which is built in four ninety-five A.D. It is the first institution where Kung Fu was started. So, we also got to visit a number of, and see firsthand, a number of their schools in action. So, they have a lot of physical activity along with academic preparation. Just so we are transparent, the cost at the current time of the trip equaled about two thousand eight hundred thirty-four dollars and eighty cents, which equated to about nine hundred and forty-five dollars per person. They footed the cost for two of the airline tickets, which was a part of the agreement for us to even attend. How the staff were selected, obviously, the partnership began with VCU and our partnership office, where Mieko Timmons was in place. Ms. Wheeler is obviously the new partnership coordinator. The request included that I be present to obviously be the senior ranking education person for our school district, interacting and having conversations with both their federal government and their school, and then Mrs. Kane as a senior academic person on hand as we got into conversations about academic portion of our schools. Of significant note is the summit had a heavy, heavy emphasis and questioning on how they could incorporate more of the non-academic programs within their educational program. They're heavy academic, they express concern that their students are not as well-rounded as our students. The flip side is, we had lengthy conversations about how do we improve our academic performance to match their academic performance. So, there became a mutual appreciation and understanding of the possibility of creating a win-win. Of course, though, the highlight was the idea that they want to do a better job of teaching their students English. Thus, the request for us to provide teachers who are able to teach their students English. There is a high demand for students who want to come to America. Our commentary was, we have a high interest in having our students being taught Mandarin, which if you are not aware, is the largest international language available, growing language in the world. So, it will make our students even that much more college and career-ready, because it also makes you very marketable internationally for a job. The next steps was that our Office of Community Partnership, which serves as a point of contact pending board approval, and there is no action tonight, we have given you the partnership agreement, you have this PowerPoint within your board docs. It's for you to review it, get any questions you need answered, and be prepared to give us the yea or nay to start the conversations, to actually move forward with establishing those intent agreements within the partnership. Obviously, there are things that if we pursue this, as we told them, that we have to work out. For example, the cost of living is a lot less expensive there than it is coming here. While they are very independent as an educational institution, they are already equipped and prepared to do things like house our teachers and other things. But I share with them, but a teacher coming here, the cost flips the opposite way. Things like that have to be worked out. We have to coordinate with our Virginia Department of Ed with certification and all those other types of things. So, the first teacher exchange would probably not be till 2016 school year. But we could pursue opportunities using technology, potentially. In fact, my last district Mandarin was being taught to our high school students online, live. The teacher in China was up at 2:00 AM in the morning, teaching our students over the web, in which many of them said, while there was always some challenges, if it froze or something like that, the cultural connections, the authentic language exchange and, and, and teaching, they felt was well worth it. The dialect was very pure and very, very much appreciated by our students. You know, Ms. Kane, Sandra, any other commentary? But we wanted to publicly, because of the nature and the extent of the trip, again, it started in fall 2013. There was evidently an agreement already established that we would provide a courtesy visit, like they came here to return there. Most of the cost was covered by them with regards to the two plane tickets, and they fed us, and they fed us, and they fed us to death. All they do is eat, it seems like, but, but they're little, which is amazing in stature, but they ate a lot. Ms. Wheeler? So, if you have no questions, we need you to be prepared. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Gray? I just had, just a quick question. Would it be, while you're pursu-, you're pursuing things, would it be appropriate to get an informal affirmation from the board or consensus? I think it's really important work. I think having a second language is needed for every student when they leave Richmond Public Schools. So, this is something that I personally value, and I think that the school district should hold in high value. Having, being able to obtain at least one additional language before our students leave. So, I don't know if there was a way to get a consensus to move forward in pursuing the partnership and getting the approvals from the Virginia Department of Education, because I don't think that we should put that off for too long. I really think it's important for every student to be able to access this program if possible.
Ms. Gray, in our mindset, we're not uncomfortable with that happening on December first. We kind of planned that mindset, given that you may want to look a little bit more with something that you actually may want to suggest us that we consider some other things that we haven't thought about in intent. So, we're comfortable with just actually getting the blessing to pursue, because at the end of the day, what you're saying on December first is agreement to pursue the agreement and work on those things, you know, anything else we add. But ultimately, we believe, I believe, because of the significance of this, whatever final agreement we hash out still has to come back to you all-
Definitely.
Say, you know, yeah, we're on board, because there is going to be some consideration for budgetary implications also that we need to bring forward to you at some point, because the housing and other things are going to be very different for them coming here than what it is for us coming, just things I know from past experience.
And also to have in mind that we have other sister city relationships, we have Saitama Japan, we have Mali, Africa. To be able to expand it to other cultures and other languages would be really great. So, with that in mind, when drafting the boilerplate agreement, I think it would be really an interesting thing to pursue with our other sister cities and, and other countries if possible.
So, and then, Ms. Larson, all I'd say is, anybody got any particular questions or suggestions they want us to look up or be familiar with? For December first, we welcome them sooner rather than later, so we have time. If it's without our, outside of our purview, that we have to go to somebody else. But other than that, all we ask for December first is go for it. And then we'd ultimately, once we hammer out the details and work out the nuances with the State Department and actually VDOE and the actual State Department with other things, we just got a lot of governmental issues.
I think Ms. Epps has a question or statement.
I do. Dr. Ben, wanted to talk to you a little bit about, I appreciate that this was already on the table before you got here, and so ultimately, we were just kind of following up, building that relationship. My concern, though, would be priority. Is this more of a nicety, as, and will it trump those things that we know we must do that are necessary? And so, while I appreciate that all of our children should be exposed to be able to speak two languages, we, and, I don't mean to be flip, but we've got some language barriers happening right now that I think probably trump us. I'm more comfortable with us dealing with what we have on the table right now and then coming back to this as an extra, because I believe that as a school district, we need to be able to have multiple opportunities for our students. But I'm a little concerned that we would be having this conversation, even although it's informal, by December the first, when we've still got some necessary stuff out there that should inform our December the first discussion.
If you recall, I would answer that question this way. Couple of things I've said coming in as superintendent. One is equity of opportunity, which we've talked about earlier. One of the huge vacancies that I see for our children is a disparate opportunity compared to our suburban districts. In that, a college and career-ready student should have the opportunity to be exposed to another language. And the fact that we can't do all of them, I've been no, I've been very transparent about the fact that if we do any three languages, it would build a foundation, because one of the things I've- of the things I've shared, we started with our Director of CTE being put back in place and our Coordinator of Fine Arts. What you will see coming forward in our next budget is request to fund an instructional position for foreign language. We do not have a true foreign language program. And while we don't have resources to do all, the three, in my mind, minimum, that you would hear from me in our Academic Improvement Plan is Mandarin, is Spanish, and American Sign Language, because I believe that they also support career readiness, that you will be able to get a job and be more marketable being able to speak Spanish or Mandarin or do American Sign Language. So I see it as tied to an academic opportunity also, is how I'm looking at it. Now, in the grand scheme of things, if we can't afford to do it, that may trump it if it becomes too big, but we still would look, I would look at this as part of our opportunity to improve our language program in our school district. We have a need for a systemic approach to career and technical education. We have a need to regrow and redevelop our fine arts program. And I look at it in three kind of simplified shells without knowing the depth of capacity of our children yet is elementary is kind of introduction. I look at middle school as you kind of narrow your focus and really get into and try to foster a love or an interest. And if some kids are more advanced, they can get into really learning. And then high school experience should be a continuation, an opportunity to start developing, an opportunity to be bilingual, bilingual, and bicultural by the time you leave, if possible. So that's how I kind of depart, compartmentalize it for myself. I don't know if that helps answer the thought process at least now, but I will tell you at the end of the day, if it becomes too much, that's part of what we may have to say is too much for us to do. But my hope is it's part of if we do this, it's also part of, there's a partnership piece, but then there's an academic piece that I would hope that if we actually do get a foreign language instructional specialist on board, they're going to spend great time upon academic services intertwining this into our foreign language program. So that's just my thinking of why we'd even bother to do this.
I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Taylor?
I'm sorry, I was slightly distracted through part of it, but one of the professional development trips that Ms. Pinkney Epps and I went on in Miami, we had an opportunity to visit some of the local schools, and they were saying how when these children came in, I mean, I think there was, what was it, Portuguese and what was the other language? No, it wasn't Mandarin. But I guess the point of it was that the students were started off at a certain age, and of course, that was the language in most of their homes, but of course, you don't always speak it correctly, grammatically correct. But the basis was that they started them off in those really, really early years and let that transition all the way through. Do we have a plan that we're going to be mimicking or implementing to show how we can expect that bilingual stage by a certain point in, say, high school? Do we have any type of plan put together?
To answer your question is no, because we have no one dedicated to working on. That's my point about not having, for whatever, at one point, the school district, I believe in Ms. Hare and my historian, this district had those type of positions that tried to do that. And when you remove those positions, you're not having someone centrally looking at your language acquisition development program throughout. And that's one of the reasons why I believe we need to bring that position back to actually develop what you're describing. But I also would say that philosophically, what you will find me philosophically, is that even as we have students who migrate here, we have to try to develop a capacity to make sure that we use what they call L1, the native language, to teach L2, so that we help them sustain their native language while they're learning English. And Collier and Thomas, which done a lot of research, they're one point out of George Mason, they've been in North Carolina, and they promote dual-language bilingual programs, which is, I would say in Texas is like a battleground over that issue, where some believe that you should be English only and never speak your other language, which I have deep-rooted issues with that, because that's similar to what happened to our history, in us in history. So it's a little bit personal to me also. And it's repeating itself quite often as we have children who migrate to us, that we really, really do need to build capacity to support our children in learning English and as best possible still sustain their native language. We also have to build capacity to help our parents who come here who don't know English to try to have ESL programs for adults, so they can support their children at home as best they can, because what happens, we're finding in from my three years in Texas, is we lose some ground when school's out, which is learning loss for everybody, but then it's magnified for a second language student. So I gave you a little bit more, but we don't have the capacity right now to do what you're asking, and we hope to build that capacity, if that makes sense.
Yeah, definitely. I think if you're going to ask for the last, the last question, it would be a lot of questions, but if you think right, that's not the question.
Right.
I just wanted to briefly say that I appreciate you sharing all this from the trip. I was at Maggie Walker a couple of weeks ago, and as you know, language is a huge part of their curriculum. And Maggie Walker, this is genius. They bring you into the school, and the kids give you a tour, and then you have lunch with the students as well. So, you know, all the time you're spending is not with adults saying how great the school is, but it's with the children who are Richmond students at Maggie Walker. But they were all very excited about the languages they were learning, and I think I took two years of French in high school, and I can probably speak about 10 words. So I did not have a strong language education, and the students are getting an amazing experience. So I hope that we can expand our opportunities so that all students are having more offerings than what we're offering now.
I would tell you that it's interesting, the meetings that I've gone to at Maggie Walker, and Ms. Gray has gone to more because she's been here longer, but it's interesting that when I look at student presentations, even at the board meetings or the awards, there's a heavy Richmond student presence who tends to get a lot of awards out of there that I find actually amazing. Now, no disrespect to Maggie Walker or anybody else, but we need to make sure they don't have to go to Maggie Walker to do that. But we also need to make sure that when we make programs, they're inclusive models, not exclusive models within our schools, and that's our goal. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda?
The next item is 4.03, discuss the recommendation for academic program change at Benford Middle School to increase enrollment.
Okay. All right. First, I would like to thank everybody that has waited so long for this report. We really appreciate you all waiting. And Mr. Jeffers, if you could hold off a minute, I think Dr. Ben wants to start the conversation out.
As you prepare to receive this conversation and for the people who are here who've waited, I want to make sure we frame the lens. These are options, and we're asking the board, not at this meeting, to take any action, but be prepared to tell us what to do at the December meeting, which way we want to pursue. These options came about because some previously already existed from past history, as we did research with regards to conversations that have been previously held in RPS as we tried to figure out, and you, people talk about, oh, this has been talked about a lot. So understand it from that lens. Interesting enough, we also, based on some questions that have come up at the last meeting, I asked Mr. Krantz to have the company that we use for our GIS services. Currently, as it sits, our challenge would be even if every student, based on the 2010 census, ages 11 through 13, in the zones the way it's designed right now for Benford, went to Benford, there's only 235 of them that live in that actual zone from the 2010 census. So based on that information right now, the zone itself does not have the number of students that would fully provide capacity to the building. Of that, the total six and eighth grade RPS students that live in, based on 2014, is 153. The school is currently enrolled at, I think, about 214, 215 students. What we found is that about 80 of them come from the zone, roughly 50 come from out of zone. The question always arises about what happened with the buses. I don't know if Mr. Jewell, Marty Jewels is still here, but the buses went away, as I understand it, from when the No Child Left Behind did not require, and Virginia asked for a waiver, many states asked for a waiver, many of the students were bused in as part of the No Child Left Behind requirement. When that stopped approximately two, two and a half years ago, a lot of enrollment dropped significantly because students weren't being bused in through the No Child Left Behind provision. Anything else before that, you know, we really have a hard time answering. There is a lot of emotional charge about this. People ask, why does it come up? It's because it is our most significantly under-enrolled school. We actually have to give it 10 more teachers than what it's actually budgeted for based on enrollment, so make it so that the building could actually function to give those kids a full program. When you think 10 more teachers, that's $6 million that is actually being invested beyond its normal allocation based on enrollment. So it's come up on the docket because we have to do something to actually maximize the effective use of the school, whether it be that it is repurposed, as Mr. Jewell said, whether it is that it is a specialized program put in it to attract students to come to the school, but something has to happen. Additionally, I would tell you also that it is on the radar. It came up in the meeting at VDOE as a school that is vastly also approaching accreditation issues because of the performance and accountability system. So we have to do something to actually take some type of action to help change this pattern that has happened, for whatever reason, at Benford. To the teachers that are here, as I told you in the meeting, there is no list of teachers who don't have a job that has been discussed, or staff that has never been part of the discussion, at least not administratively. So anything else is rumor and speculation, and administration has had no conversation or a board member has not asked me anything like that, just to kill that rumor. Okay? So I want to say that to reassure you all that that has not been part of the conversation from superintendent to board or board to superintendent. Mr. Jeffers?
Thank you. Ms. Larson and Dr. Ben, thank you for that introduction into where we are this evening. During November 3rd, school board meeting, Dr. Ben just summarized there, you can see in the first of the slides that are here, these are the same as last time, nothing has changed on those. But where we ended up last time was we said, we're concerned that this school is under-enrolled. It's for, in a number of reasons that Dr. Ben just kind of reiterated. What are some options? And we had a couple of things we actually mentioned last time, and what we recharged last month, or the direction we received from the school board, was would you all go and look at, look, kind of put a little more flesh behind some of these options, take a look at them and come back to us two weeks. So we're here tonight with a very broad view of four options that we would suggest as possible, possible ways to move forward with Benford. IB whole-school model, the college board's spring board program, repurposing Benford High School building and moving open high school there as a 6th through 12th school, and creating a fine arts integrated curriculum model at Benford Middle School. So these are the four options, and we're going to spend just a few minutes summarizing each of them, and of course, we'll take questions as we're able to answer them. We are looking tonight, and I'll reiterate at the end, we're looking for direction from this board as to how you would like us to proceed. There is no decision. We are making recommendations to you, or here are some options. There could be a number five, six, seven, or eight. This is not an exclusive, this is, these are the options that we came up with over the last few weeks. So let's kind of run through them here. Middle-years program, I think a lot of folks are familiar with it. This is currently at Lucio Brown Mill School. Of course, we would do it if we moved to a middle-years program at Benford. It would move for full implement, full implementation and accurate implementation where all students would be benefiting from that. We have seen, of course, that that is attractive model at Brown, and so we're, you know, there, you know some things about that now in the middle school. It is designed for all students. This is an exclusive program. This is designed for all students to engage in the content, and of course, all courses are integrated through the common themes and ideas of the IB learner profile. International Baccalaureate Process is a three-year process. If we were to explore this route, if we received direction from this board to move forward with an IB program, we'd begin the process of consideration. We would, the heads of school would attend training along with key personnel in the school. During the second year, faculty began to be trained and bringing everyone up to speed on what it means to be an IB school, visitation would begun, would begin. In the third year, you'd actually have a verification visit in the spring of the third year, and a decision would be made late in the spring, early summer, whether or not the school would in fact be granted as an IB school. So that's just a quick sketch of the process. College Board, this is, College Board, of course, does the other, the other side of things, the AP world, and this is in a way, if you want to think about, just as a way to kind of maybe parallel, parallel it, the College Board Spring Board Program is a, the College Board's version of an IB NYPD program. Integrated curriculum, especially through math and English, math and language arts. So that's what you see in this program. We do not currently have a program, a spring board program in RPS. It is designed to be an integrated 6th through 12th program, but certainly would live at a middle school setting and thrive there. You can read a little about it. There's also a link there, and of course, this is on the public board docs. Anyone can read about the College Board Spring Board Program. The pieces that makes it unique, you have, you know, the, of course, the alignment. You can do this, there's actually an option, the board will have to decide if you want to do this as digital option or a in-person option. Assessments look different in this than they do in IB and other programs. And you can read the FAQs for, they separate them out by the language arts and the math, that you can read the FAQs about those. The timeline on something like, on the, this program is fairly quick turnaround. You'd have to have your teachers and head of school trained, and that training would happen this summer, but it potentially could go into place for the fall and for the next This is probably the most dramatic change. This one would be where you have open high school now, and you see a picture of open high school. It's in a incredibly award-winning school, lots of great things going on, open high school in a very small place. And so what is the issue that we heard from the community and we heard from, that we're looking at facility-wise? We have a nice facility at Benford that is very underutilized. How do we increase the utilization of that building and academically purpose that structure? This would do that. Open high school model, and Mr. Glesman's here tonight, along with Dr. Lyles, I think those are the only principals I saw here tonight. We asked Mr. Glesman about this, you know, what would it look like? And he said, hey, I've been talking about this for years. I'd love to be a 612 open high school model. What does it do? What would it look like? We asked him to give us a little feedback on what that would look like and hear some of the pieces for that. Open high school model is not like any of our other schools. It's a very different model of instruction, but he's enthusiastic that it would work well in a middle school setting. So you'd have a 6th through 12th program of open, open high school, open secondary school. It would somehow change that. Benford Middle School would not exist as Benford Middle School. It would be open. The building would be considerably utilized. As you look through, well, those are all, you know, just different pieces that you might look, I don't know if I hit that or not. Ms. Friend, did you, I don't know if you hit, clicked somewhere else. So when you look at this, this is certainly a great model, that's proven model, that expanding it certainly down there would be legitimately possible, and that would be possible to do in the next school year. So there's your third option. Fourth option to consider, a fine arts integrated curriculum model. We have Ms. Adams here tonight, who is able to kind of help us through this model, should we have questions a little bit later. This one is a very different approach. This one is a very different approach, arts integration, so that they find, they reach the understanding, demonstrate conceptual understanding through an art form. It may be theater, it may be dance, it may be music, it may be through any creative venue, that the students would, would be demonstrating their mastery of content through the arts. Very different model and entirely different model of approaching school. You can read your desired outcomes. There's nothing I don't think anyone would argue against there as the desired outcomes for everyone involved was the school, the community, the parents, the students, most importantly, and then, of course, what our teachers and staff receive from this. Three prongs of the approach, if you look at it that way, visual arts, performing arts, and literary art. How would you, so a decision had to be made, students would be making decisions, counseled into these programs. Which path would you want to choose as going in there? Which your focus of your going into your middle school program? What path would you choose? And then your program of study would be set up from that. This one is a stage three, has three stages to it as well to make this work. It'd have to take considerable planning to make this work. You see, there are cited several, and again, this is on the website, so you can review or research any of these. There's, there are models out there now doing this, Mind Pop, Bates Middle School, Hider Word Thinking, and A+ Schools. They're doing this now out in the country, so we probably want to study from them how they make it work. So that'd be the initial work that'd be going on this spring and summer. During the next year, or year, the year one, stage two, you would do these things to get your faculty, staff to say, what is this actually going to look like? How are we going to do this? What's it going to be? How do we make this happen? And then the second year, you would tweak, put in place the things that you've learned, tweak that and make that, you know, at the end of stage three, you should have an effective operating school integrating the fine arts, learning through fine arts. Oops, hit that button again. Of course, Richmond is rich in the arts, known throughout the world, one of the great public art, public colleges for art. We have a rich diversity, cultural heritage in Richmond, and you see a few of the partners that we could potentially tap into here or that eager and willing to tap into this, this kind of model. So you have four models. And it's really going to be into the hands of the board, of course, is do you like any of these four? Or you want something else? You know, the reason we looked at this was very simply, we have an extremely underutilized facility that's in danger in its current state of being denied accreditation. And so we brought you these four models. IB would take a process of at least three years for approval. The college board, this be, you could do a regular, has textbooks, digital, no textbooks. Every kid has a Chromebook, iPad, some device. Potentially could start in 15, 16 school year. Open high school transfers from where it's located and becomes a K, a 6th through 12th school on where Benford currently exists, and Benford closes as a middle school. And then the final, fourth option, arts integration. We would like your guidance, and we're happy to handle any questions that you might have that we can answer at this. Again, we're at a very, very broad contextual area right now. We're looking for some guidance from you, and, of course, if we have, we could eliminate this down to one or two or one, that'd be awesome, if we can get, then come back to decent board meeting with more facts.
Ms. Taylor?
Hello, Mr. Jeffers.
Hey, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you, Dr. Ben, for your introduction. I have a question, kind of a complex question, and then a follow-up question. Okay, in regard to the, two of the specific choices that you chose, the IB as well as the School of Arts, what would be your, your process for admission into the schools? For example, if we go through this redistricting, rezoning process and the zone lines change, those students who live outside of that zone, am I understanding correctly that they would still have to test to get into the IB school as a whole? And, and the art will be your selection process for selecting students?
I think those are great questions that we would have to have, we would try to get some answers to those and come back with, here's our selection process based on any of the models. If you said it was going to be one of those two, then we'd go back and say, here's what our, we'd say our selection would look like. Rezoning is a separate thing entirely. So if you say, we're going to rezone the districts and take a look at them, and we want them to be, there to be a Benford attendance area, and, and that's going to look like this, that would obviously be, you know, your all's decision where zone students would attend or not attend. And ultimately, the decision, the admission process would be up to you guys.
And let me even dig deeper, because that was a question Ms. Larson actually was asking me. That's something that, first, we have to talk about, what is the academic program that we're going to pursue? And say you chose one of those. I share this data because you need to know that in this current boundary format, you don't even have enough kids that live in the boundary to populate the school. So say you redid the boundary, what would impact then is, you, I would hope if you tried to rebounder school, you would look at the data and play with the lines and see how you populate it more. You could do that, actually capture more kids. So when it comes to if there are seats after that, you have a variety of models. It could be application, it could just be straight lottery. It could be just straight open choice. Now, as you know, in our current model, we have transportation challenges. We're two to three million dollars over on a regular basis with regards to transportation. So if you have choice, then you got to factor in what's your rules regarding that situation, which is what you're struggling with now with regards to students at the secondary level with choice. You could also do just straight, every district, if you had an application process, get so many seats to make it equitable for all nine districts, so that it's X number for each district, and the kids have to come from that district, which, you know, so there, it just, there's a lot of choices. We didn't really factor that in until we had to look at, you know, what is the academic program? And then have that conversation with some options of how you could populate the school for the board. Because if you did reboundary, you might, depending on how you draw the boundaries, that might
Run anything, yeah.
Fill it up itself now. Again, I didn't look at anything outside of it, how far you'd have to do it, so I don't know how much that worked, but feasibly, that could happen. You could try to pull somewhere you got schools that overcrowded and change the boundaries, for example.
Okay. And, and secondly, and I'll probably need to, once it goes around the room, need you to come back to me one more time for final, final. Just a statement first, is I've been following Benford since I was on the board, running for office 2012, but especially right off the bat in January of 2013. I followed and done the research, done my homework on the enrollment numbers. And not to take anything away from the two of you all, but you all are new, and you're just pinpointing Benford because you're looking at the numbers, which to me aren't anywhere near the bottom of the power comparatively speaking. And I guess that'll come out when we address our priority schools. But
You talk.
Enrollment has been intentionally, and, and I can say that intentionally, the school has been kept under-enrolled. I mean, if you can provide transportation to schools such as Albert Hill and Fox Elementary, then certainly you can provide transportation for Benford, especially when you've had over 100 students who have been kicking the door down, trying to get in. So I just wanted to make that statement also from a, as a person who's sat on the disciplinary panel, excuse me, quite a few times, especially earlier on, I see that many of the students on the middle school level, I've seen this personally, are directed towards Benford Middle School. So when those students come in who have challenges and, and they, and they can grow and from where they are, but those test scores count towards that of Benford Middle School records. Those behavior, those attendance, all of those things contribute. And I know those were some of the things that were posed, questions that were posed at the staff meeting. But I don't think to date they've been addressed. So I guess my question ultimately comes down to
No, wait a second, Ms. Taylor.
If we're expected to make a decision, if we're expected to make a decision on this on December the 1st, can you all at the very least bring in the people who sit in those trenches, the principal, the assistant principal, the counselors? Can you bring them before us to give us their insight, their level of expertise, their hands on? Because I, I just, I don't understand, have they been a part of the conversation? Because I haven't heard any input from them. And so I guess that would be my question.
Yeah, and I think the key is that you guys need to have some input first and you decide, because what if it was a model that, that we're going to do this with the school, and we need them to decide what they're going to do? So I think you, we're looking for from you to say, what do you want to do at Benford, if anything? And that's the point, is say, we'd like to do A or B. That's when you'd file the faculty and staff and say, what will this look like? How would we make this work if we were doing this at Benford? Having a discussion prior to that, would you want to have lengthy discussions around four options? For instance, that you saw tonight with the faculty that, that then would come through here, and you all could say, no, we're not going to do that. So that's, we didn't involve people until we had some direction from you guys.
But I just, I, I don't mean to cut across you, but they're going to come after me quickly for running this on. But you all are bringing this information that doesn't even agree with and align itself with my own personal research.
Ms. Taylor, your time, your time's up.
I, I thank you, thank you. But you all, you, you're not aligning yourself up with the research that I have done as far as the behavior issues, the redirection from the disciplinary and the enrollment numbers. We know that the principal was standing outside that school building at the beginning of last school year, waiting on a bus. So if you all can do that research and do that homework, it would be greatly appreciated because it just makes the administration look like either they're not doing their homework or you're withholding information.
Ms. Taylor.
So if you can align.
Ms. Taylor, thank you. Thanks.
Ms., Madam Chair, I made a comment to the board that I could not continue to allow misleading comment to be made, and I won't sit here and do that, okay? Now, I'm going to be pretty transparent. Every school lost transportation services. And I have to be careful, because when you bring the principal in, there are things that I can't say in this public forum. But I would ask that we be careful about making comments that we may perceive to not be doing due diligence, but every time we try to answer a question, it seems like we're being dismissed. I can't change people's perceptions. What we're trying to focus on is fixing the problem. So you all get to tell us which way to go. That's all we need to focus on. Tell us which way to go. Whatever information you need, we can do the best we can to bring it. But we keep going back to the past. The bottom line is, we're spending probably eight to 10 million dollars on a building, more than what it would be normally be allocated. And my job as a superintendent was brought here to help improve academic performance. And we've given you an option that says the building stay put. Matter of fact, three of the options are just working within the concept of the building and do programs in it. Only one talks about repurposing it, which would be, I wish Marty Jewell was here. He would see a very balanced approach. And then Mr. Jeffers has said, is there a five or six you want brought? We can do that. So we haven't predetermined, but my job is to give you options. Two of them can start right away next year. So we're just giving choices. So I ask that, can we talk about what next to help the school as opposed to keep digging into the past? I can't fix that. And I don't want to be held hostage for something I didn't have anything to do with. Neither does administration that is here now. We want to fix the problem. And none of the board members stand in front of the state board with their credibility as a superintendent, because at the end of the day, none of the board members are listed as a failing superintendent when schools fail. 21 years in this business, 14, 15 years of education. Give me some respect to be the educational leader, to do my job, and let me do the day-to-day operations, and let the board give me direction and policy to give you a plan. And then tell me which way to go. That's all I ask. Please.
And that's really respected and appreciated. Can I just do a follow-up? Because I, that was directed towards you.
No, Ms. Taylor. Ms. Gray?
So all I'm asking is that we can at least, at the very least,
Ms. Taylor. Ms. Taylor, your time is up.
Instead of bringing all the data and all of the facts, if we could consider bringing all of the data and all of the facts, that's all I'm asking.
You've already gone over your time.
I appreciate.
Other board members need a chance to talk. Ms. Gray?
I just, I've heard a lot about Fox and Hill tonight and transportation. And I just wanted to state for the record, for those reasonably, reasonable people to know that there are only two conditions where students are transported into all of our schools outside of their zone, and that's through McKinney-Vento when we have children who are homeless. And if they're administratively placed because of disciplinary issues. So open enrollment does not provide transportation. We can't afford it. We are, we are in the hole with our transportation right now. So throwing two schools out there constantly to make a point that isn't valid is unfair. There is no privileged transportation going on. Everyone in every school has transportation within their zone. And if a child is homeless, we get additional funding for that, and we provide the transportation. If we have to administratively place a student, we are legally obligated to provide transportation. Under the No Child Left Behind Act, we were obligated, and we got federal funding to provide transportation for students to choose to go to a different school when their, their school was failing. When the state entered two years ago into the No Child Left Behind waiver, that money went away. We do not have funding to provide overall open transportation to, to move kids from every end of town to whatever school they choose. So if we can find the money, if you know where to find the money, anybody on this board can find that money, then we can have a conversation about transportation and school choice. But until, until those resources are found, I don't know how we accomplish that. And I think that, that resource allocation is what this is all about. And when we're operating at such low efficiency to have 3,000 empty seats within our middle schools, 2,500 and another 2,500 in our high schools, we're costing our children a lot of resources.
Ms. Epps?
Thank you, Ms. Larson. I've got a suggestion. What's the possibility of moving the students that are currently attending the alternative program over on Lee Street into this excess space over at Benford and give them an opportunity to an alternative model of education?
If that's what the board would like to do, then I'm sure we would investigate that and come back with you with some recommendations of implementation of that.
Yeah, I, I think that's perhaps something
So, number five.
At the immediate, we know that we've got those children cramped over in the building on Lee, that this is an opportunity that maybe we could use a school within a school model as we've done in the past, I think with the 13 acres, with the RIL program. But I, the issue at Benford is twofold. They, they're under, under-enrolled as well academically. They've been declining. Are they facing denying their accreditation?
They've drastically declined in the last two years, and it, we would suspect on the current trajectory, they would not be credited next year.
Okay. And, and Dr. Ben, maybe this is more so for you, and we can discuss it offline, but the, I'm hearing of four options for Benford. But how, how do these options differ from, I guess, GH Reed going into priority status? Those, I'm mixing apples and oranges? Okay.
Priority, just, but it's a good question, because somebody else may be thinking it. But I do want to make sure, if you remember Janice at the state meeting, is it next year or the year after that? But your priority status is triggered by being in the bottom 10%. So each year, the state calculates that number. So it's compared to other jurisdictions, so it's like a 750-something schools, or Title I schools, and then the bottom So it's like the 750-something schools, or Title I schools, and then the bottom 10% are determined to be priority that given year. And then you stay in it at least three.
Okay.
Before you can exit. So, and I give you example, one of our other middle schools didn't hit priority, but the year that their numbers came in, they weren't the bottom 10% that I thought they would have been in. So it's, it's compared to the schools that given year that triggers your status. So that's why it's, you know, you could say, well, this school now has lower scores, but this year, two of our elementary schools were on the cuffs. One barely made it and just missed priority status. Reed was lower, and it hit the bottom. But we know there was a bubble school that just barely made it because somebody else in the state scored lower than that school.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you?
I'm following you so far. Um, well, and, and let me then follow up with this. That's why I really think it's going to be imperative that we have this full discussion December 1, because I don't even understand the process of why we're discussing Benford right now and we aren't discussing the alternative program. We've got two schools that are in the same category, and we're only hearing about Benford tonight.
Because one is not only just academic, it is also...
Under- enrolled.
So it has two things that are negatively impacting it, and it has a financial drain on the system.
Okay.
At the same time.
So we'll, we'll be discussing the alternative program on December the 1st?
Well...
That special meeting, I think she's talking about.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Ms. Harris-Mohammed.
Um, and I know I missed part of your presentation, Mr. Jeffers, but, you know, somewhat familiar. What I am most concerned about is just the process for me. It appears to me that, and, and my perception is my reality, that the process of dealing with one school, and I know one is a K through 5 school, but I, naming the schools in terms of their statuses and in terms of their, their priority or not is the same for me. And the processes haven't been the same. So on December the 1st, I think it would be helpful if we are explained how a school gets to where and the why. Because what I'm hearing in the community, and Benford is not in my district, but what I'm hearing is that, you know, why hasn't administration changed? Or what makes it different? You know, it, it seems that it's equally as bad in terms of data, and children are more than data, but why treat this community different from this community? And I think that we just, we need to have a hard knock lesson on why decisions are being made the way that they are. I could care less about the decision that was made in the past with the previous administration. I'm not going there. I'm talking about right now, today. So what I am hearing is a lot of jumbo, bumble because of this, because of that. Does this make sense? Does that make sense? We have teachers and we have parents and children, particularly adults, that do not understand the process. And what they want to be told is, why my school? And if it's a two-part, because they're under- enrolled and their data, okay, then maybe some type of relationship building within the school will help them understand where they are. I don't know. I'm just throwing out a suggestion. That might have happened already. I don't know. But these piece, these pieces of information just does not make sense to me. So I would suggest on December the 1st that we just have a hard knock lesson on, because, and I'm just going back, that the last time you all did a presentation, it was like 29 schools that were in school improvement. And I threw out the comment, then why are we not replacing 29 principals? No one has yet to answer that question.
Thirty seconds.
So you all, I think for me, are going to have to come with that information. If we have 29 schools in school impro, in some layer of school improvement, then why aren't we replacing 29 principals?
I think...
Mr. Jeffers?
Oh, yes.
Oh, I, I want to, because I thought I answered it that night. The first response is, and I've, I believe I've said this before, Reed principal was in a situation triggered by federal guidelines. That's why they came up. The principal was going to get the same status and treatment as the other 29, but they entered priority status that required us to take action. That's why that school got ramped up faster for a change. And that's one of the models that you have to pick when you hit priority status. Two out of the four require removal of the principal. The other two are closing a school or restarting a school, which really weren't options. So two out of the four, which was really the only two options, is what triggered it. The other thing that would get to Mrs. Epps a little bit is capacity in our system. If I remove 29 principals right now, we don't have 29 replacements. I could put warm bodies in there, but we would not be able to get the quality of leaders that fast to replace 29 principals. Here's the other conversation that we've had at the state. And, and you can do some of the research. There are a lot of schools right now that if you send a new principal in right now, it's bigger than the principal. And we're sending one person in to try to overhaul a school without the autonomy to do what they need to do to make changes with staff and other things, too. That's the flaw in the model that I've shared with the state superintendent also. They also know that oftentimes when you go in to a school as a principal, all evaluations say everybody's great. So now they're going to go through multiple years of trying to address it, but in the meantime, they're moving right along in accountability system. And by the way, accreditation is separate from priority status. They're not the same. One is a federal, the other is a state issue. So you could actually be doing better on one and losing ground on another and vice versa. So that's confusing to people also. Additionally, just to be honest and transparent, unfortunately, there's a history of decisions that are made based on who knows who rather than the quality of the work that we're trying to overcome. It doesn't make them a bad person. And you can be a great person, but has the work being done to get the people to be successful? And that's what we're trying to overcome. Some of that is innate to the individual. Some of it is, we haven't built capacity to make our people successful that we're trying to fix. Because we've got a lot of people working hard without the resources. That thing I talk about carving a turkey with a spoon. So those are the challenges systemically that our capacity is inhibiting some of our ability to change also.
I'd just say a real quick thing, Ms. Harris-Mohammed's comment on why Benford different, and I think it goes back to what Dr. Ben opened with, was stand for the state superintendent, state board, when are you going to do something on your end first? And so what we have here is looking at a, a capacity, achievement, combination of things, which is unique to Benford. There's no other school that looks like that, that's dealing with this combination of factors that's contributing to it. So what could we do differently? And then we've come to you guys to ask you what you'd like us to do.
Mr. Sturdevent.
Uh, Dr. Ben, can we have our IT folks post these presentations on our website so that they are publicly available?
We can put them on the front. They're on board docs, public access, but if you want us to push them to the front, we can.
Just so folks know, folks can go and, and find them relatively easily.
Okay.
Uh, and then second, you had given us some financial numbers. I heard, I thought I heard 6 million, or I heard 8 to 10 million of the, the fiscal impact, and I may have misheard it, so I'd like to follow up on that.
When they give me numbers, and just you trying to, while I get it, each, the average teacher's salary is about 60 to 65,000. So when you're getting...
With benefits.
In our, with benefits, in our district. That's what it cost us budget-wise. So when you multiply that by 10, there's 6 million, and then you look at the operating costs.
600,000.
Uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, did I say 6 million? 600,000.
Right.
Um, and then you have the operating costs that exist. So thank you, 600,000, and then, so you're really about 600,000 to 800,000. I said million, apologize.
Division-wide.
Yes. And the division-wide number he's saying is where the 6 million comes in, but...
Six, so 6 to 10 million division-wide from the 3,000 empty seats? Yes? Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Jones.
Um, I'm, you know, I'm sitting here and I'm looking at the, or thinking about the presentation and the options that we have before us, which seem to be credible options, each in their own right. And the question is, you know, to give the administration direction on what we want to see. And the question that keeps coming up in my mind is, have we engaged the stakeholders to get an idea of what they want to see? Um, you know, I, I like, I like the fine arts idea. I like the springboard idea. I like them. I'm, I'm just sitting here thinking about the world of possibilities with, with either of them or a combination of, of, you know, two of the four. But, you know, I think that it would be prudent to engage the folk who live in that area and use that school and are a part of that community to get an idea for, for how they feel about it, what they want to see. And certainly, I don't mind giving direction in terms of what I want, you know, but I don't represent that district. Um, and so I, if, if somebody was talking to me about Bouchau, you know, I would, I would want an opportunity for, for my folks over there to be able to weigh in on that conversation. Which leads me to the, the second piece of it, and I'll shut up, is I, I would like to, in some way, I would hope that this wonderful conversation that we're having with these tremendous ideas, we have a middle school challenge across the city. And I know that we're talking about Benford because of its priority status, but I would like to just, um, you know, be mindful of the fact that we have that challenge in many of our middle schools. And so I'd love to see these programs talked about at Bouchau and Henderson and, and MLK. And so what we, what we don't do at Benford, you know, perhaps there's an opportunity for us to do it, you know, at Bouchau or some other place. And so I, I just want to make sure that while we're looking at its, you know, small picture, we're also looking at it big picture as well. So those are, that's my two cents on it. I would like to get an idea for how the people in that area and in that district feel, what they would like to see happen, because I think that could combine. We can give you direction, but if, if they don't want it, if they reject it, if that's not what they're feeling, then, you know, we don't want to force something on them. And so I think they should have an opportunity to, um, for the sake of discussion and dialogue, to weigh in on what they want.
And Dr. Jones, that could be your direction to us. I think that's our point is, and Mr. Jeffers said it best, unfortunately, this type of conversation does not qualify for a closed-door session. But for us to go out and have that conversation without making you all aware, we believe is inappropriate. You could say, we don't like any of those, come back with something else. But either, but at the end of the day, you could say, oh, all of them are live, now go have the conversation and get feedback. So again, that's why there's no action tonight other than some direction. So your direction could be, oh, we're like all of those options. Show them all and get feedback and bring it back. Again, but the board, we believe, should be aware of the possible options, and then bless it so that we don't go out there and get people excited. Because when a superintendent does that, and the public gets excited and say, I want, I'm just making it up, they want it springboard. And then we come back to you all and say, well, wait a minute, now you made us stuck. We're backed into a choice with our constituents who want it, and, and we're not feeling comfortable with that. So that's the, the process, and, and so it could be, go ahead and go public, have meetings. You all could say, that's what we want you to do next. And they will go do that.
Um, Ms. Harris-Mohammed, just be mindful, because I think you only have a little couple of seconds left.
I have, I have like two seconds.
Nine seconds.
Well, can that be the direction? Can it, can it be the consensus of the board that that is the direction that we want the administration to do? Is to... So somebody else took my five seconds and I can't say anything else? Is that what you're telling me, Ms. Lillen? Can you, you have a procedure on that written in that book right now? So that, that's what I'm asking, that we get a board consensus on that would be the next step. And from that, we come back and address it.
I agree. You have my support on the community outreach and notification.
So I guess I would ask just a little bit more direction. Would you want to go division-wide with that or with only the 180 folks who live in the division in that district?
Well, I have a professional, personal answer to that. Professionally, I think you need to start within the community. I, I heard Dr. Ben say there's only a small...
Ms. Harris-Mohammed. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. That's my fault.
He was asking me a question, so I couldn't answer.
That's my fault, I'm sorry.
It, it's up to the board. I'm just trying to enforce the rules that we all set, okay? Yes. Yes.
Professionally, I think you need to start with the community that feeds into school. If it's not a wide range of people, then you all need to look at possibly who would feed into the school. Look at the elementary schools, look at, um, you know, parents from out of zone, right? Start with that group and then go from there. Personally, um, I, I think you need to go district-wide. However, I don't think we have that amount of time.
Okay. I, I'm just going to offer a couple of thoughts to you. I agree with some community meetings, and I, I do think that having them district-wide would be a good idea, based on what Dr. Jones was saying. You know, I was kind of looking at the list, too, and thinking, okay, well, we could put this in that school, maybe we could take this and put this in another school. I just want to say thank you for bringing these options forward. I think, I know I ran my campaign on middle schools. Middle schools are extremely important to me, that we make improvements, that we offer choices to our families, that we retain families in our schools. I mean, the numbers don't lie. We see children come to us for elementary school, they leave for middle, and then we get a bump back in high school for our specialty schools. I have a question about the 6 through 12 program, the open program. I think that's the only 6-12 model you all put forward, correct?
Yes, of the four, that's the only one.
Okay. Was there any discussion about having 6th graders and 12th graders in the same school?
I mean, we have Franklin Military Academy that, that runs that model, that I've seen very well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Mr. Gillesman has looked into that, and, and if, I, I didn't hit the points very much on the slideshow, but if you want to go back and look at them, there were a few points in there that this is actually a really nice model to get the community very much involved, to help the students develop some, some responsible values for interacting with others. So there's some different pieces to that model that it would stand alone within the same building, and it would, you know, as, as the high school does. So there's a lot of secondary, 6 through 12 is a great model because you brought, drop your disruptions that happen every time you transition from one, you know, middle school, elementary to middle school, middle school to high school. Those transition years are very difficult. You can ease that by going a 6-12 model. That is a nice way to do that. And there's a lot of schools that the 6-12 model's preferred way to go, but that's just, you know, one of those little pieces.
Okay. And then my other question was just about the financial impact of each program. And I realize there are, there are all kind of these ideas out here right now, but if you have any numbers at all related to the programs, I'd appreciate seeing some of that as well.
All right.
Ms. Taylor, I'm sorry, but you used up all your time.
I only use up my time because Dr. Ben chimed up, chimed in, and I was just, was responding to what he said, but this is a 5th district school, so I would appreciate the courtesy that you extended to me at the top of the conversation.
Ms. Taylor, the board voted to give every board member three minutes to talk per topic.
If you look through the records, you'll see that many, you'll see that many board members have, have already exercised more than three, four comments, and, and board docs will show that. I'm just asking, it's a 5th district school, I'm just asking for the courtesy.
It's up to the board.
Um, if I have any time, I'd like to defer those minutes, seconds to Ms. Taylor.
Thank you. A minute and 33 seconds. Thank you. I just wanted to finally say that Ms. Gray presented a challenge on how we could bring forward additional revenues. Um, I know that for, with Fox...
I know that for, with Fox, for example, they have 50% of the students that come within zone and 50% outside of the zone, or somewhere around those numbers. Well, the same thing is happening with, with Benford. A large percentage of those students are over in the South Side, I think specifically Bouchal and Lucille Middle School. The students that want to come into Benford, being in those South Side schools, are causing those class sizes to be enlarged. If we can reroute those students that want to be in Benford back to Benford, then we could bring in additional federal funds for reduction in class size, and perhaps that would help with the transportation that those students would need in order to get, get transported to Benford. So again, we lost somewhere, I think around $1.2 million in increase in the classroom size, so if we can look into that data and see how we can redirect those funds to transportation and help facilitate the enrollment at Benford Middle School. Thank you.
Ms. Gray?
Just to respond to a couple of comments, just to make sure the correct information is being put out there. There is state funding for reduction, class size reduction for K through second grade, which is not going to impact increasing class size at Benford. Adding bus routes is not going to save us money, it's going to cost us money. So, I, you know, I don't know how you add additional bus routes and save money that way. Moving kids out of one school and transporting them from the South Side to a school in central Richmond. So I, I'm baffled as to how that's going to save money.
If we find a way, just to use that concept, and I do agree, and that's my mistake.
Ms. Taylor, I, I believe you're out of time.
Is that, is it out of time on teachy time?
No, ma'am, out of time. No more time left.
Okay.
Well, if you could just use that concept and see.
Okay. So the, do we have consensus on having some community meetings? Is that the charge that we're giving to the administration?
Yeah.
Okay. This is a big idea, so I encourage my fellow board members to listen to your constituents, bring your questions forward to Dr. Benton. You know, it seems like they're, they're willing, they want our feedback, so please don't wait until the next meeting to ask all your questions. Please communicate before then, because it would be great to, to get some feedback before then that we can communicate. Dr. Benton, do you have anything else you want to add? Okay. Again, I really appreciate all the time and effort that was put into this. I appreciate the audience members for coming out. Please, you know, contact us, let us know what you think. The presentations on our website, on board docs. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda.
The next item is 4.04, received the financial statement for the period ended October 2014.
And then this?
The statement for the month of October is the, in the same format as the, we expanded a little bit after the July report, so August, September, and this October report have the same format in terms of the attached reports. What's different in this is we've given you a recap of, at this point in time, now that September 30th enrollment is firm, that gives a fairly decent idea. It still is dependent upon, excuse me, actual enrollment between now and March 31, which usually drops off about a little over 1% between September 30th and March 31. March 31 is what the state pays us on the average of the seven months attendance. So we had 22,121 students on September 30th. And if we go by what's happened over, on average of the last three years, that would translate into a 21,895 students by March 31. We budgeted this year, predicated on 21,845, so it's a 50-student difference. So that would generate about another $214,000 on, on state student-driven accounts. We've had other accounts that we've needed to adjust, that we think we need to revise downward, not count on those funds for this year at this point. $180,000 in tuition paid by other divisions. It's mostly because those other divisions are now sending kids to their own or other regional CTE programs primarily. The Virginia Preschool Initiative, we're serving about 882 kids versus 1,204 that we could be serving. We don't have the capacity to serve them all at this point. That had to be certified by the October, end of October, and we cannot adjust that for the remainder of the year, so we had to reduce that estimated funding stream by a million dollars. K3 class size reduction, last year, I think we gave up about $2.6 million, again because we didn't have the staffing to completely staff up the K3 class size reduction. We made some inroads in increasing that some this year, but we still needed to reduce $500,000 in those funds based on our current enrollment configuration and staffing configuration at K3. This is, this is predicated on the fact that we're going to hire 16 more K3 teachers, of which 10 were temporarily awarded early in September to accommodate the need. We still need six more. The other question is whether we can even find those teachers at this point. But anyway, to receive that additional money, which reduces the reduction, so to speak, to this $500,000, requires that we spend money on the teacher side. And then $300,000 in Medicaid reimbursements. I'm being exaggerating, if anything, on this side of it, so that we're conservative and not going to count on any revenues. We probably will get this $300,000 in Medicaid reimbursement, I think there's a good possibility of it. But, and we've just purchased some new software that should help us and a service, Excelify, that should be helping us increase our Medicaid reimbursement. So hopefully, that'll be a stream we can count on the others. I think it's pretty dead certain that those are the numbers we're going to be living with this year. So that's a million 980, but we offset that with the increase in enrollment of 50 students, some sales tax, a slight upward tick in that of 50,000. We're looking at a $1.7 million revenue shortfall that we need to offset. When we go to the next page, there's the paragraph citing the 16 teachers we need to hire for the K3 class size. And then beyond that, we also have some, after the budget was approved last year, as we finished out last year, we've got additional information on what it looks like our needs are going to be. It looks like this budget is, is, has some serious challenges on some line items, and one of, several of those I'm listing here. Again, we may have some other sources. We are definitely going to have some turnover and laps from vacancies that we had and just in the standard turnover where an older teacher retires and a newer teacher comes in at a lower salary. So we've got, that, that's a fairly significant number along with benefits. But if utilities run like they did through last year, we were about $500,000 over. Well, the budget didn't increase going from last year to this year, so that's a possibility. Transportation, overtime, and again, these are areas we're going to address, but if we run like we did last year, we'd be sitting in the neighborhood of 845,000 over. Exceptional Ed, contract services and tuition, compared to budget, we could be over 900,000. The interpretive services, that's a new initiative that has come up since we adopted the budget, that's 200,000. Workers' compensation insurance, again, this is a trend, 600,000. The most recent trends are, are somewhat encouraging that we might not need that 600. So again, these are things we're going to have to monitor month to month as we go. New health insurance from the Affordable Care Act, the reinsurance fee, every employer had to pay $63 per head, per member, and the member is defined as our employees and their family members, so all, everybody. The population is about, we have about 3,800 employees enrolled in health insurance, but about 5,500 members with their family members covered with our health insurance. $63 a head, that's $347,000 that we had to pay to the federal government, and we'll have to pay by December 5th. That was not a budget item. There's a chance that that's going to be taken, though, from the Health Reserve. We are in a self-insured health insurance plan with the city, and in a preliminary discussion with them, the intent looks like there's going to be enough money in the, in the reserve account that has accumulated from our self-insurance fund to pay for that. And hopefully, that'll be the case, we can remove that, that item from this list. Studies and surveys, the compensation study that we're currently undertaking right now, the human resources evaluation that we just had completed, and the communications study, $170,000. Those were not budget items, they're items that we thought we might take out of last year's carryover fund balance, which will be a potential source of money to cover some of these items. That number will be certified hopefully here in another, within a month, anyway. Today's the 17th of November, we're targeting right now, having by mid-December, the completion of the audit by the external auditors. And I don't have a number on that yet, but it's, I have a preliminary number, it looks like we'll have some help there. Copier services, if they run, again, like they did last year, we would be $600,000 over. We're working on a solution to solve that right now with Xerox, who's our current vendor, to eliminate this overage. And then the charter school, with the agreement you made with them at the end of last year, we said if their enrollment varied by plus or minus 5%, we'd pay them the additional per pupil amount. I think they ended up at 302 this year, which their variance of 5% was up to 295 students, so we owe them for another seven or eight students, which would be the $60,000. So somewhere in that neighborhood. And also depends on whether they were exceptional Ed or general Ed kids, because the cost per kid or the allocation per kid varied slightly on that. So it'd be around $60,000. So the projected revenue in this, with the combination of the, these challenges and the salary and benefit laps and targeted reductions, we're going to go through departmental reviews with each of the cabinet members and their departments in depth, line item by line item, between the rest of this month and December. And originally, I said I'd bring you a projection to year-end in this month, but I'd like to push that to the first meeting in January or the workshop in January, because then we'll have a thorough analysis by department that we can present to you. We've already got the format set up, we've done a first pass of that projection to year-end. And right now, it looks like we might have to balance out by maybe $2 million, but it looks like we also could potentially have that from carryover funds to cover. So it's going to be definitely a year we're going to have to manage to make it work, but I'll be able to give you more details in depth. And then every month thereafter, after we present that detailed projection to year-end, we'll just tweak that every month and give that to you each month so that we can track how that balance is proceeding as we go from here to June 30.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Westbay. The hour's getting late and we're behind on our agenda, so any questions, board members? Okay. If you go home and you're digesting this and you have some questions, just email Mr. Westbay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
The next item is 4.05, received for action, an MOU with the Virginia Department of Education regarding Thompson Middle School.
What was coming attached to your board docs was a copy of the MOU that we're required to enter into with VDOE as part of their denied accreditation status. In short, what that means is when your school loses its accreditation, you got to partner with Big Brother to run your school. And I think of one significant note, I don't know if it stayed in there, they asked us to highlight, was the board training language. Is that still in this one? That they pointed out. And it has to be specific towards academic stuff and improvement, not operational stuff. I've had a quick conversation with VSB, given them an alert for possible support, and us meeting that requirement. So just gave them a heads-up, haven't talked the details, but that was a highlight that VDOE Office of School Improvement, that made sure I was asked to point out to the board. Give an hour to short, Mrs. Larson. I don't know if we really want to go through it, or Janice just say, tell them what needs to happen and I read it.
Yeah, I can just skip through that if that would be.
Can you, can you give us the, the high points?
Synopsis, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Basically, this is a memorandum of understanding between the Virginia Board of Education and the Richmond School, City School Board. That's who the agreement is between. The first part in the MOU just goes over the requirements, it's all based on the SOA and the ESAR flexibility waiver. The second part describes what DOE will do, their responsibilities, and it outlines some different assistance that they will provide, such as asset mapping and having their DOE specialists come in, do an audit of our curriculum, and this is at Thompson Middle School, because they are denied. They'll come in and do an audit of our curriculum, provide some technical assistance and things like that. So that's what DOE, there's a list of other things that they'll provide as part of this memorandum. That was in part two. Part three outlines Richmond City Public Schools' responsibilities and the school responsibilities. And there are quite a few items on that for us as our responsibilities, which includes development of a corrective action plan, and that's probably the key piece in this. We are required to support the development of a corrective action plan by the school and ensure that all items in the academic review's essential actions are addressed, as well as other items that they identify to ensure their school improves in all four content areas, as they are academically warned in all four content areas. The corrective action plan must be shared with stakeholders for input, then be revised. That corrective action plan will come back to this board before review prior to being sent to Virginia Department of Education on January, by January 15th. So we have, with the holidays, that's a pretty short turnaround. Of notice, Dr. Benton alluded to, the Richmond City School Board and Superintendent will implement a professional development plan. That's item number four. This will include all board members, the superintendent and pertinent central office and building-level staff, which focuses on their respective roles and responsibilities for school improvement and priorities listed in the section that this is in. It continues to allude to the corrective action. It also requires that the division superintendent and appropriate staff meet with the Office of School Improvement every quarter to go over a quarterly data analysis report on the school. So we'll have to go to DOE and report out to the Office of School Improvement on a quarterly basis. The superintendent is also required to support, report out each month at this board meeting on the progress of the corrective action plan. We, the City School Board and Division Superintendent can appear by request of the Virginia Department of Education at any board meeting. And we are already, number eight, we're already participating in the ARP training, the Aligning Academic Review and Performance Evaluation. We're going to be finished with that in January 14th, so that takes care of that responsibility. So we actually have something that we're actually putting away. There'll be a division-level team assigned to the school, as well as a division liaison assigned to be at every school meeting. That takes care of the, the division responsibilities. The school kind of reflects the same thing. It goes ensuring the corrective action plan is done, participating in the ARP training, implementing with fidelity any recommendations or technical assistance provided by DOE, and then having the school improvement team there at the school level, again, keeping the school plan in end of star. So the last part of this, MOU- So the last part of this MOU is modification and termination. This memorandum of understanding may be changed at the discretion of the Virginia Department of Education at any point in time when they don't feel like we are addressing the corrective actions as we should. It was also shared that this will be in force beginning on November twentieth, and will terminate when Thompson Middle School is fully accredited and is no longer a denied or priority school. So we are involved in this memorandum of understanding with the state board, that Richmond City's School Board is involved in this memorandum of understanding with the state board until those conditions are straightened out. And so, we're looking at this school, but now we're looking, you know, we have the potential of those other schools that are third-year warned to fall into this same boat. If the school does make significant progress, we could, according to Charles Pyle, actually in today's Richmond Times-Dispatch, could apply for, request a conditional accreditation for this school, but there would have to be marked improvement in all four content areas.
Okay.
So are there any questions?
Ms. Epps?
Yes, very quickly, if I'm a parent, and my child is currently in Thompson, and I'm, I'm informed that's uncredited, do I have an opportunity to take my child out of that building?
You can enroll them somewhere, I mean, you don't, not to enroll in another school, it's, it's not the, this is a state issue, not the, I think you're referring to the federal program where there was school choice involved, this is state-side, and there, that doesn't involve school choice.
Okay, so there's no choice?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And you talked about letting stakeholders know, we knew at the beginning of September that this school was uncredited.
Yes.
Were, were parents informed then?
Yes, the principal shared that information, we, we knew that they were, we weren't even requesting a consideration for a conditional, so the principal shared that when she shared their priority status. Another letter will go home to the parents stating this, and also asking for stakeholder input into the corrective action plan that is mandated and required by this MOU.
Okay, so I just want to be clear, many of the constituents that I serve, their children go to Thompson, and so I want to make sure that if I pose this question, that I give the correct answer. They don't have a choice to move their students out, their children out of Thompson?
There's no school choice involved with this.
But if we, is the flat-out answer no, do parents have an opportunity to appeal to you, and we make any accommodations?
There is no, I'm going to clarify, be clear about, there is no state or federal mandated choice. Anything we do is a local decision, and you have a choice mechanism in place. So, right now, they would just apply through, after the school system, doing the normal choice process for enrollment to go to another school.
But that would be?
Next school year.
Next school year?
And remember, you don't currently do the transportation thing.
Okay.
But they could very well go to Benford.
So, does Thompson have a turnaround partner right now, or will we be approving a new one at the upcoming meeting?
You will be approving one at the upcoming meeting, December first.
Okay.
They'll be presenting.
Okay. And I just briefly wanted to say that there is a new principal at Thompson, I don't know if you all remember or not, but she came in on July first, and I've had an opportunity to sit down with her a couple times, and I think she's really great. I, just, she has a lot of positive energy, she sees a lot of potential at the school, so I think this is an opportunity to put some resources around the school and turn it around and get it back on track. And you need an approval?
Correct.
Okay.
So moved.
Sir.
Motion was made by Mr. Sturdevent, seconded by Dr. Jones, Mr. Sturdevent?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
No.
Dr. Jones? Mrs. Pinkney Epps? Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ms., Madam President? For the sake of-
Dr. Baden.
Superintendent, and I'm not putting you back on the spot, but I'm not understanding, this is something we're required, so I don't get what's wrong with the no vote, I'm trying to understand, we don't have an option in this.
Okay. Ms. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, and as a board member, I deserve to vote no. So I don't think I need to explain, I didn't know that I needed to explain my vote no. I'm very much aware of what the MOU means, but I have a reason why I voted no, so I don't think I need to, I would feel like I need to explain no. So are you?
Oh, I don't think you need to, I, okay, I just need to know, because there's something that we could do that's not being addressed, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
And it is, but I'm not going to discuss it right now. And to even put that out there, you don't understand why somebody voted no, that should have been an offline question.
No, the question was about the, what the issue is with the agreement.
So I received an ask that there is an issue with me voting no. I have a reason. I can't speak for Mrs. Pinkney, but Sean DeHarris Mohammed has a reason, and I found it very, very heartening that you would even make that statement.
Ms. Mohammed?
That's the reason.
The reason-
I'm done with it, I'm done with it.
Okay, but-
You have an offline conversation.
And I want to go on record, because I need to share this. I have, I'm going to say it to go on record. We, and I understand it, Ms. Mohammed, but if you don't want to share it, that's okay, I didn't know if, whether it was something public or not that you could talk about, so I was just asking. Because the reason I'm asking-
This is the second time.
The, the reason I'm asking is because this record and information also transcends going to the state. We are dangerously close, like I said, to a district-level review, and all of our actions are adding to that. So the very thing we're doing with Thompson is going to become us as a district next. So I was just trying to get some clarification, so it's not misrepresented if there was a valid reason or concern that maybe we didn't do something, or something we need to bring back to the board to correct action. That was it.
But I wanted to know why I voted no, never wanted to have you to call me and not explain it to them. But I'm not going to have that conversation right now.
Okay. Ms. Epps, did you have anything you wanted to say publicly?
The reason why I voted no is, is my concern about the process. I think, I appreciate what you've explained to us here, but my concern is that, wow, Thompson is our only uncredited school, and we've just kind of let it slide in under the radar, and that concerns me that my perception, we're protecting certain districts, we don't want certain information to get out there under certain districts, and so, because there also may not be an opportunity for the constituents that I serve to now move their children, I'm voting no.
Okay. Madam, Madam Clerk, can you give us some clarity on the vote?
The motion passed, three ayes, two nays.
Okay. Next item on the agenda?
The next item is item five, other informational items, five point oh one, is to receive the budget calendar, and that was posted to board docs. The next-
Madam Chairwoman, there'll be some dates here that are marked TBD, at some point we'll need, those are mostly for locations, but we do need a discussion at some point to talk about school board budget goal-setting to guide us through the rest of the process, but other than that, we've laid out a similar schedule as, I think, has occurred in prior years in terms of timelines here, but unless there's questions, that's the extent of my input.
Okay. When's the first date on the schedule?
Well, we had said sometime in November originally, for the school board for a goal-setting session, and we're in the process of collecting information from the departments now, through the month of December, we've got a first session in, what, just January sixteenth, advertised, and a school board with the first work session being January twentieth.
Okay.
So, somewhere between now and hopefully before we break for the holiday, then.
Okay. Do you need us to approve this, or?
Hmm, I don't think it necessarily needs formal action on approval, it's just, we'll need your guidance in terms of preferences on the timing of some of these dates as we go through it.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is item six, consent agenda received for action budget transfers. Those transfers were on board docs.
Move that we approve the transfers?
The motion was made by Mr. Sturdevent, seconded by Mrs. Pinkney Epps. Mr. Sturdevent?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I have one question about the budget transfer. Can somebody speak to the two hundred thousand dollar transfer?
There's additional transportation needs, we're, we're almost out of money for the student transportation for exceptional ed at this point. The biggest next line item placed to pull the money from is tuition. It's not that we don't think we're going to need the tuition dollars, but it's the best place to take it from now, and this is all going to be part of our balancing act in what I just described earlier with the budget report, and then there's additional needs for materials.
So, one of the biggest issues is that we, there's no longer a separate budget for our psychological services, so all materials for psychologists relative to assessments are purchased through the exceptional education budget. As with all tests, every couple of years, the tests are renormed, and we get information about the upcoming re-norming, how long we have, that we can use that, and how long, when the date that we can no longer ethically use the test. We have not ordered tests for our psychologists in the past two years, they already share on teams, as do our, our social workers and speech pathologists because of the significant budget constraints, and so those things will be coming forward in the budget, but we really do need to move forward aggressively to get some assessments, to make sure that we can assess with integrity, and also be mindful of copyright rules and regulations. And the other piece was the transportation for our students that are on private day that maybe go on a Henrico and, and other places based on the IEP and the needs of that student.
Okay. So the line item from the tran, from the tuition, that's for private placement, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So that is going, and, and, and just to make sure that we're just being transparent at this time, we do know that we will still need that, those monies in tuition, and this is kind of a stopgap measure, because we have to continuously pay bills to transport our students daily, and so we will need to look at some other things, because the tuition line, we're now pulling some funds to deal with now, but we'll need that money there later as well, for tuition, behavioral aids, and things of that nature.
Okay. Just one comment.
Into the whole analysis of the entire budget, where we're going to find funds for the things that we know we have to do.
And I'm sure you're going to factor all this into our projections for next year.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, again, the motion was made by Mr. Sturdevent, seconded by Mrs. Pinkney Epps, Ms. Taylor. Budget transfer? Mrs. Harris Mohammed? Dr. Jones? Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Motion passes six one. The next item is new business.
I just have one brief announcement. Ms. Larson attended, as well as I did, everyone was invited to the legislative reception with city council and our delegation from the House of Delegates and the Senate. We attended that today and got information about the legislative priorities for the city and the city's administration, as well as city council. During that discussion, I approached Lou Brown Ali from city council about the possibility of us having a joint meeting with councils sometime in January to discuss our budget priorities, especially when it pertains to our capital budget, and they seemed very receptive to having a joint meeting, a summit on children. So, just wanted to put that out there, that they are receptive to us having a presentation on our facilities concerns and any other budgetary needs that we want to bring forward, and a joint session, so, wanted to be as transparent and bring that out into the open. We're going to be reaching out to them and to the rest of the board to get some dates coordinated on that.
Anybody else for new business? Ms. Epps?
And it's somewhat old business, but this Saturday, November the twenty-second, we will be hosting the first community check-in in the ninth district. There will be some discussion about, because all those schools are Title I, getting the parents to really understand the significance of their role with the Title I compacts, and everyone is definitely invited, if you have a Title I school, it may be something beneficial for your parents to attend, and I definitely want to extend an invitation to the superintendent and all of the administration to join us for the luncheon presentation from noon to one-thirty. I think you'll find it very engaging.
Ms. Pinkney Epps? I'm sorry, where's the location of that?
Our location is Elkhart Middle School.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda?
I have some questions.
Oh, okay.
The BDA is having their convention this weekend.
I'm sorry?
The BDA is having their convention this weekend, in the Shorefront area, Friday evening, all of us are hired, and then they have a series of workshops and sessions that you have to sign up for, but they also have a payback show, and our RIA president is a part of that, have a part of that as well, and the second thing is that the chat room has been rescheduled to be scheduled for at board with, same time on community safety, school safety, who's responsible for the safety of our students, and also to discuss signing.
Ms. Taylor?
I would like, this is new business, right? I would like for us to revisit the timing for board members having a right to speak. It seems like two options is being exercised by some and not by others, and it seems to only be pointed out when people like myself go over the two, so if we can bring that back to the table, because I would really love to have Dr. Derek Jones's input on how we should move forward with that, and also, if we could discuss school uniforms.
You are not going to say anything about the five minutes. Did you hear what I said?
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Next item is your closed session.
I could talk about it, I love it, because I love it. Ain't gonna do it, so you're not gonna say anything. And I will not speak to you other than that. I could do it. I'm not.
Pursuant to the personnel exemption at two point two dash three seven one one, A1 of the Board of Virginia in nineteen fifty, as amended, I moved at the school board of the city of Richmond, convening closed session to one, discuss the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers. The authorities are- public officers, employees, or employees of the school board, or for discussion, consideration, or interview of prospective candidates for employment.